Okay, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. We have roll call.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard. He said he would be listening, but not necessarily.
There, I'm sorry, yeah, I couldn't find the mic. Attending remotely via teleconference.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. Next is general public comment. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have two people who have signed up to speak remotely. The first one is Adam. Adam, you'll have five minutes to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so first I'd like to again thank Erin Murray, Steve Woodard, and William Page for having the sense and the courage to oppose Flock. I'm not sure why the rest of the council hasn't followed your lead, given the overwhelming and damning evidence against Flock, and given the overwhelming objections by the community. While the city did unfortunately sign a contract with Flock, that shouldn't factor into any decisions going forward. You don't have to fall prey to the sunk cost fallacy and double down on your mistake by actually installing the cameras. If you ordered meat from the grocery store and found it crawling with worms, would you still eat it, or would you do the sensible thing? I have a series of questions for council members who still want to move forward with Flock despite everything we know. One, Flock lied to you and has an extensive history of lying. Do you think you can trust the claims of a business that already lied to you and has an extensive history of lying? Two, when you sign a contract with a company and you immediately need to form an oversight committee to try to protect residents from that company, is that a sign of the company that you should be doing business with? Three, Flock cameras leave the city open to costly lawsuits. Do you support leaving Mount Lake Terrace open to costly lawsuits? Four, per the city's contract with Flock, Flock can act without a warrant, without notice, and without our city's consent. Do you believe this private company with a history of lying should be above the law? Five, Flock has a history of providing its data to agencies that are above the law and use that power to stalk, terrorize, kidnap, detain, and yes, even kill people. Do you support helping those agencies stalk, beat, terrorize, detain, and yes, even kill residents and workers of Mount Lake Terrace? Six, if an agency asks Flock for data, do you honestly think Flock, a company that lies and that exists to provide data to those agencies, will say, "No, we told Mount Lake Terrace we wouldn't do that"? Do you think they'll put up any fight at all? What do you think will hold more weight in Flock's sides? The demands of a federal agency or a plea from the Mount Lake Terrace Oversight Committee? Seven, a number of activists and journalists have already been illegally abducted, illegally imprisoned, and are now in the process of being illegally deported to random countries. They broke no laws. They did nothing that could even be remotely classified as wrong or bad. Do you support the idea of residents and workers of Mount Lake Terrace being illegally abducted, illegally imprisoned, and illegally deported to random countries on account of Flock providing data? Eight, when Flock inevitably shares our data and members of this community are snatched off the street or out of their homes and imprisoned, what are you going to do? Do you have a plan? Nine, what do you think the purpose of Flock is? Do you not realize that their entire purpose is to provide agencies with surveillance data and make a profit while doing so? It's not an accident when that happens. It's their fundamental mission. It's time to display courage, leadership, and sense like William Page did when he changed his vote. Be brave enough to admit that you made a mistake by letting this company prey on your fears, and be brave enough to change course while you still can. Don't double down on your mistake. As I've said before, Flock isn't a solution to anything. It itself is the threat. It endangers all of us, including you. The only responsible decision is to not install the cameras in the first place.
We have one more that signed up remotely for general comment, but I believe it's public safety related as well. And then the rest are Flock-related, which will be for the public testimony when we get to that item.
Then we should have everyone comment during that time and not during general comments.
Yeah, if there are any other general comments for items not on the agenda, that would be for this time. Under anything that is related to public safety, the ordinance, the resolution, or the policy, should, comments should be made under item number six on the agenda tonight.
Victor, was yours a general comment? Well, this will just be for general comment, and Flock, you can get up again during that agenda item. You'll have five minutes.
The first short comment is about, I saw the article in today's MLT News about promoting marketing the city, that you're hiring an outside company to do that. And my only comment is that, couldn't you, that would have been a perfect thing to have a community group together, you know, form a commission, a group commission to put together, because I really think we have enough people in the city that could figure out marketing. And the community ambassador thing looks like a great program. Thank you. I would only like to add one thing. For myself, for a number of reasons, I would not want to, I would not be a community ambassador, but I would definitely be interested in attending all the sessions and learning what they're learning. So please, open up. If you want to become one or not, just come and take the lessons. And, oh, I noticed on the schedule there's an executive session listed as number five. So I assume that's you go in private and come back later. I was just wondering if that could be pushed till later, after all, unless that affects what's going to come later on the agenda, so that all the people here could stay and get all other things, stay, listen for all the other things on the agenda, and then you could just do the executive session and let everybody else go home. That's it. See you in a little while with Flock.
That concludes general public comment.
All right, thank you. Well, we are having our executive session next. Oh, no, we're not. We're having our proclamation for Every Child Matters Day. So if you can have the six people come on up. All right, so the two of you will be speaking afterwards. All right, welcome, everybody. We're going to have a City of Proclamation for Every Child Matters Day, or Orange Shirt Day, as it's called also. And we're presenting the proclamation to the Mount Lake Terrace High School Indigenous Student Union, other Edmunds School District Schools, and the Urban Native Education Alliance. And they will individually say their names when they come up later. All right, so, the City of Mount Lake Terrace Proclamation, Every Child Matters Day, or Orange Shirt Day. Whereas, Every Child Matters Day, also called Orange Shirt Day, is observed yearly on September 30th in the United States to reflect on the truths of boarding school histories, honor survivors, and commit to healing, reconciliation, and education. And whereas, the United States, the U.S., the Indian Civilization Act Fund of 1819, the peace policy of 1869, in concert with several churches, adopted an Indian boarding school policy with the purpose of "kill the Indians, save the man", meaning the systematic destruction of indigenous identities, traditions, ceremonies, spirituality, and language of native people. And whereas, between the early 1800s to the 1960s, hundreds of thousands of American Indian, Alaska Native, and Native American, Native Hawaiian children were removed from their families and tribes and placed in over 523 Indian boarding schools operated by the federal government and churches, with 16 operated by the federal government in Washington State. And whereas, many Native children were mentally, physically, and sexually abused, and many died at the Indian boarding schools. And they were interred in cemeteries and unmarked graves away from their ancestral land and not given traditional and respectful burials. And whereas, many indigenous communities continue to experience intergenerational trauma compounded by systematic oppression, racism, and spiritual, cultural, and familial disruption due to Indian boarding school policies. And whereas, the City of Mount Lake Terrace is working to provide equitable services and build a community that is safe and inclusive. In this work, the city is collaborating with indigenous community members to share their stories, culture, and learn how to create a sense of belonging to our city. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kyoko Matsumoto Wright, on behalf of the Mount Lake Terrace City Council, do hereby proclaim September 30th as Every Child Matters Day. And we're going to have a few people here to talk, and then we're going to give each of these out to everyone. So, who wants to talk?
Nite Indalowan, Riley Guthrie Dewayu, Simshienu, La Shikik Dipdegu. Hello, everyone, I'm Riley Guthrie. I'm Simshien from Alakala, Alaska. I'm a part of the Eagle Clan, and I just want to say thank you so much for, you know, everyone being here. This means a lot to me as the president of the Indigenous Student Union at the Mount Lake Terrace High School. Like I said, I just want to give a big thanks for everyone being here and, you know, everyone for doing this. So, thank you.
Jemai, I'm Liz. I'm Sukbyak from the Native Village of Yak. And I don't think I could say it better than Riley. Just, I wanted to say thank you all so much,
All right, so next is our executive session with legal counsel to discuss potential litigation, RCW 42.30.110. Is that a one and an I?
Yes.
Okay.
Expected to be about 20 minutes, so we will return at 7:35.
Okay, so we're back at 7:35.
Executive session has been extended another 10 minutes until 7:45. Executive session has been extended five more minutes until 7:51.
Okay, we're now back in session. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more person. All right, so now, now we are back in session. And next on our agenda is a review, review of the Flock policy, resolution, ordinance, and public hearing on ordinance-amending Community Policing Advisory Board, MTMC 2.40, with our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council. I put all of these items into the same staff report. If you decide to move forward with any of the items tonight, we'll have to vote on each separately. So that would be the ordinance separately, the resolution separately, and the policy language separately. So, a couple things to point out here. First, there's been continued conversation, and the city council has discussed the oversight of the Flock system. And the staff was directed to update the Community Policing Advisory Board ordinance, which you have attached to your packet. You can see the original there. Typically, when we update ordinances, we redline them. This one was written by typewriter, so I wasn't able to redline it. But I wanted to give you a comparison of the two ordinances, the original from 1996, and the new one, the new draft, anyway. So what this new Community Policing Advisory Board does is it changes the composition of the board a little bit. The original had 10 members, and the way it's drafted here has seven members to match up with every other commission that we have in the city. We have set positions for members of the community on the advisory board. At least five shall be member, shall be citizens of Mount Lake Terrace, and two shall be members of the city-sponsored DEIC. One member shall represent the business community, and one member shall be a student from Mount Lake Terrace High School. And not less than one member with law enforcement experience, for example, a retired member of law enforcement. So, the appointment terms would be similar to other commissions in the city. That'd be four, except for the high school student, that would be two. And the initial terms would also be staggered. So we don't have, you know, the same, completely new board at the time. No compensation, as with every board and commission in the city. And then we put in here the specific duties of the board. Make recommendations to the police chief concerning police services within the city to enhance police-community relations, which was taken directly from the original. And make recommendations concerning policies, police department policies, procedures, and programs. Hold public meetings. And then item number six there, under 2.40.050, is to review the Flock License Plate Reader Program and provide independent review of the purposes for access. So, those are the things, everything else, kind of the changes. Everything else in the ordinance involves procedures, you know, how you appoint a chairperson for the community police advisory board. I did want to tie this in with the resolution that's also a part of your packet. So in that resolution, we drafted two different forms, or, excuse me, two different elements of the review committee for Flock. The first would be the Community Police Advisory Board that we just discussed. The second is a subcommittee of the DEIC, because that was an open question. I drafted both of those paragraphs. They're about midway, two-thirds down the second page of the resolution. Depending on which direction council chooses to go, you just delete the other paragraph, and everything's fine. Nothing else needs to be changed. So those are the two items. The public hearing is actually in the ordinance itself. I'd be happy to discuss all of it, including the policy and the policy changes. Or we can hold the public hearing just on the ordinance and then move on with the other items. But I did want to point out how those two are intertwined. If, I'll just continue. If anybody wants to stop, let me know. So, the resolution itself, separate from the two different forms of advisory on the Flock camera system. Resolution itself is a little bit modified from the Statement of Values that the city put out about a month ago, I guess, maybe a little bit more. Council asked that the resolution on the Statement of Values be turned into a resolution, which is what we did. And there's a few changes in there from what we put out earlier. But the overall general theme is that transparency is a priority for the city. And that kind of, that theme kind of weaves its way throughout the Statement of Values. And I'd be happy to discuss any particular provision of that. The policy itself, everybody comfortable moving forward? Okay. Policy itself has additions to make it very clear that the Flock system, and this is policy 6.17, is only associated with vehicles and not with people. It also has a few changes toward the bottom two-thirds, highlighting that this is subject to the Keep Washington Working Act, and that's explicit here in the policy. Does, makes a couple of changes to the audit system and how it will be reported, including making it explicit that audits are conducted once per quarter and that the quarterly audit report will be forwarded to council, posted on the city's website, and published in the city's newsletter. It also makes it clear that if any request for data comes from an outside agency, we capture the unique ID of the request, the name of the person, and the law enforcement agency they work for. A few of the other things specific to the audit increases the number of audited records from 10 to 20, randomly selected inquiries. And if the request comes from an outside entity, again, we have to capture the unique ID of the request. We also, the policy would require that we ask, or we inquire with Flock whether they have had any requests for Mount Lake Terrace camera systems that did not come through the city itself. So, next, I just wanted to highlight in the memorandum of understanding that we would use with other outside agencies, all of the same things that were just mentioned in the policy. But the MOU also requires that any MOU entered into, a copy of the policy will be handed to the other agency, and it makes clear and explicit any violations are subject to immediate termination of access to the city, our city's, camera systems. So with that, I'd happy to, be happy to answer any questions or listen to discussion.
Are there any questions? Who would like to go first?
Are we going to talk about whether that we are reinstating the police board?
Well, we have several.
Yeah, and we do have a public hearing scheduled for that particular ordinance, that element of everything that I presented to you tonight. So if there's any discussion on that, then we can open the public hearing and then discuss the other elements, if you'd like.
So are we going to go on to that right now, or are we going to cover general things at the moment and then go to the individual?
I think we can talk about the ordinance for the Community Policing Advisory Board, open the public hearing, have that discussion, and then talk about it as a whole, because I think that would be a more effective way to discuss all of this.
Did you want to open?
So, open the public hearing for the ordinance 2.40 that reestablishes the Community Policing Advisory Board. Have community comment if they wish to do so. Close the public hearing, and then council can discuss all of the elements, the resolution, the ordinance, the policy, as a whole. Because I think that would be a more effective way, rather than breaking it up into pieces. That's why I kind of put them all on the same staff report.
Councilmember Page?
Well, won't the public hearing be about more than just the advisory board?
Because it's an ordinance, we have to, we have a public hearing for that. But it doesn't mean that public comment is only contained, you know, constrained to the ordinance. It's all of it.
Okay. Mayor Protem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to open the public hearing.
It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. Okay, so, did you want to continue?
No, just, I want to call members of the public that are interested in testifying.
Excuse me. So, did they sign up? You mean those who have signed up?
I believe so.
Okay, has anyone signed up for this part of the public hearing? Thank you.
Yes, so the first person is Jillian, and she will be commenting online. Jillian, you'll have five minutes.
Hi, hi, everyone. My name is Jill, and this is my third time speaking at a council meeting about Flock. But first, I just wanted to say that I really liked the moment earlier in the meeting when the town acknowledged Orange Shirt Day on September 30th. I loved hearing from young members of the community. And this day is such an important time to remember our country's dark history of kidnapping and murdering the people who were indigenous to this land. Their only crime was existing, and the United States government made it legal to genocide them, disappear them, and force them to culturally assimilate. Thinking about this dark period of our country's history, I can't help but see echoes of the past in our current political climate, which is why I think it's so ironic that our town can acknowledge these past crimes against human beings while also moving forward with a Flock contract that could put people here and now at risk of kidnapping murder by agencies. The mayor said that the city is working to build a community that is safe and inclusive. If that's true, let's start with a very concrete step to make that happen. As I've mentioned before, when I've spoken in these meetings, I love this town, and I love living here. I care about my neighbors in this community. And based on everything we now know about Flock and their dangerous and dishonest practices, I do not see how this system will make our town safer. Moving forward with a contract will open our town up to potential lawsuits. But more importantly, it will put countless residents and workers in Mount Lake Terrace at risk. It's not worth it. As a community, as a country, let's take the steps we need to not make the same horrible mistakes of the past. I am asking that you do the right thing and cancel the contract before the cameras go in.
Next is Theo Moriarty. You'll have five minutes at the podium.
Thank you, everyone, and thanks for seeing me again. It's been a few months. I'd like to give just a blanket statement. Flock is unconstitutional on its face. It is warrantless mass surveillance that is a clear, crystal-clear violation of our Fourth Amendment right to not have our persons, our property, our papers searched and seized without a warrant. There is no. There is no talk of warrants here. There's all sorts of situations. I'd like to walk you through the Fourth Circuit based out of Norfolk. Did the Flock people tell you that they were being successfully sued in federal court? Did they tell you they lost when they objected? So, let's go through it. City of Norfolk installed 172 cameras. Sorry, I'm getting a little emotional. Residents sued. The city sued the residents, saying, "You don't have standing." The city lost. Flock jumped up and said, "We own these things. They're ours. You don't have standing to sue a private company." They lost. This progressed to the Fourth Circuit, and they're being sued over this unreasonable, unconstitutional, anti-American, mass surveillance profiling of people going about their daily business. I love this town. I adopted it. Moved here seven years ago. It was more than I can afford, could afford at the time, but MLT had just the best vibe, really did. And I'm a schoolteacher now, but I used to work for NATO, the North Atlantic Treaty Organization. I've seen countries that have these systems. They are not free, they are not fair, they are not open, and I've got to tell you, no number of working committees, policy amendments, or anything else will ever put this genie back in the bottle, because it does not care what you, as the city council thinks, and it does not care what we think. And that's not my opinion. Have you read about Illinois shutting down Flock? The whole state, because Flock said, "We are not going to share that data with anybody else." And what did they do? They shared the data with everybody else. So the state said, "Hey, you can't do that, shutting down the cameras. That's part of our contract. You broke our contract that you agreed to." And what Flock did? They sued the state of Illinois for lost profits. That's what they're doing right now. Yes, we violated the burdensome constitution. Yes, we violated the contracts, but you owe us money. That's who we're in bed with. These are not people we should be in any sort of relationship with. Now, let's move on in the Fourth Circuit. So, at this point, the city has lost, the Flock has lost, and the judge stated, and feel free to take this as a note, Carpenter versus the United States, which was the federal court ruling that stated cellphone location data must be obtained via warrant. A judge must sign a warrant saying, "The government has the right to know where you are." Why does Flock think the government gets to have a right to know where we are all the time without a warrant? This is why it is clearly unconstitutional. Now, I get it. They move fast, they break things. They're a tech company, they're an AI company, they've just purchased or in the process of purchasing the largest live dash cam video company, so they can get us from above and they can get us on the ground, and then purchase our cellphone data, because remember, they're a private company, not the government. So what we're doing is we're second guessing, not second guessing, excuse me, stepping around the Fourth Amendment by letting a private company violate our rights for us. I don't want to pay for it. It's not just $76,000. It's what in the policy it says, "And the staff to observe it." Does that mean three FTE sworn police officers staring at the monitors, hoping and, you know, praying that we break the law sometime in the next 30 days? Because that's what's happening. It's future crime. I'm a protester. I deeply love the Constitution. I go to protests. I go to places where I worship. I go to healthcare institutions. Is that timer for me?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't want to be tracked. Don't track me. Thank you.
Next is Charlene Hamilton. You'll have five minutes at the podium. And can you make sure the microphone is pulled over to, thank you.
I'm small, so I'll make sure you can actually see me over the podium. I have been a resident of Mount Lake Terrace for 20 years. In that time, I have not felt the need to come to city council meetings to know what's going on really behind the scenes, to get involved in how the sausage is made, until Flock cameras came up. And my first question is, what about our four square miles need 24/7 surveillance? Are we so crime-ridden here that we need to be watched like that? And then the council voted to keep the contract. So I started doing more research, and I followed what people were saying, and I followed what people were talking about, and I thought to myself, "Well, everybody's saying what I would want to say." And then this morning, the Google algorithms threw up a news article about Illinois. City says cease and desist after Flock reinstalls license plate cameras. The city in Illinois, in Evanston, canceled their contract and said, "You need to take down the cameras." And Flock said, "Oh, okay, we'll take down the cameras." And then they put them back up. They put different cameras up that looked less like cameras with the big screen and the solar panel. They tried to cover it up, and the city has had to say, "No, we told you to take these down." And I can provide this link to this article to the councils, that you can read it for Flock lied. And other data from this news company shows that those cameras that weren't even supposed to be active yet were already sending data. And that after they said, "Oh, yeah, we'll take the cameras down," they didn't actually take all of them down. The update for this evening, for this article, is that the city has gone and put black plastic over all of the cameras, so that their citizens cannot be observed illegally after they told Flock no. So my question is to you, to you is, what do you think is going to happen here in Mount Lake Terrace? All of your ordinances, all of the agreements with other cities, that covers our behavior. Flock has shown that their behavior is unworthy, unethical, and illegal, and the only ethical thing for the Mount Lake Terrace City Council to do is to cancel the contract and not let them spy on us. Thank you.
Next is Adi, and I will let you say your last name. You have five minutes at the podium.
It's not unusual. Okay. My name is Ode Prefulu, and I'm very used to having to say my last name. Good evening, city council members, fellow residents. Thank you for taking the time to listen to your constituents' comments today. I do want to draw your attention to the fact that Adam signed up and was the first person to speak, and I didn't see many of you actually listening, so please look at the recording. He had really good things to say. Oh! Can people hear me better now? Okay, did you guys hear what I said at first? Okay, the first comment was by someone named Adam, and it was online, and I didn't see lots of people listening, and he had very good points to make. So, I will share excerpts from an email that I wrote all of you on August 28th. In that email, I referred to a post containing information compiled by Dustin in his MLT musings, which explains why a number of cities across the United States, including, oh, sorry, including Oak Park, Illinois, have been canceling their contracts with Flock. Before I do so, please let us remember that a memorandum of agreement only works on the premise that both parties are trustworthy. Flock is a private surveillance company that has shown they will always put their own interests above ours, regardless of any memorandum of agreement that we may write and gently ask them to abide to. They simply are not a trustworthy business partner. Now, here's my email. I have not spoken in the most recent meetings. However, I have attended some meetings in person or online since the last time I spoke here, and the issue of Flock is still at the forefront of my mind. I kindly ask you to read the following post that was attached attentively, and to call and review your vote to know on the installation of Flock cameras and remaining in a contract with this company going forward, in light of the recent discoveries that have been made about their lack of trustworthiness. Not only has the broader context evolved from when you made the initial vote on June 5th, but even then, it appears that you may also have not been privy to all the relevant legal data that your city's contracted attorney tried to share with you, and so you were not able to make a fully informed choice. The responsible course of action, now that you know, is to stop this process now. I ask you to please demonstrate your loyalty to your constituents, who wish to be able to simply leave their house and drive to the library, to Double D Meats, to Grand Père Bakery, to Shahit and Dory Grill, drive their kid to any of the wonderful parks around the city, to paddle on Lake Ballenger, to volunteer with the Ivy League, to drive to and from work, to visit local friends, and to the awesome city events organized by Andrew Applewick, without their comings and goings being available for tracking nationally, for no other reason than the cameras are just online and recording. It doesn't matter that I'm a law-abiding citizen and have nothing to hide. This is an invasion of my privacy, and I ask you to please respect my wish and not invite Flock to Mount Lake Terrace and collect this information about me and my neighbors. Respectfully. So, that was the end of my first email. And then I realized I forgot to ask for an acknowledgement of my email, so I immediately wrote again. I kindly ask each one of you to please acknowledge receipt of my email, and that you have read it and understand my concern. Thank you. For the record, I heard back from none of you, and I am disappointed, because I don't know how else to officially reach you, other than by showing up here at 7:00 PM every other Thursday. And now, I work, I'm a caregiver to a toddler, I'm an introvert, I am tired, and I'm in the middle of a really good book, and yet here I am. So, I really hope that my attendance here speaks volumes about my concerns and that my message gets across. Thank you, and good night. I'm out.
Next is Lee Gresko. You'll have five minutes at the podium.
Thank you, and good evening, council people, managers, and audience. I've spoken a couple of times on Flock, and every time I come up here, I'm as nervous as hell, and it's happening again, so I try not to. My position regarding Flock cameras is to cancel before installed. We, the people, have started a movement of resistance, resistance against things that feel wrong and are wrong. Our United States is rapidly undergoing changes, changes in opposition of what we have come to believe. Autocratic leadership in our federal government is actively shredding the freedoms that many have fought for and many have died for. It takes courage to speak up. That's why I'm nervous, and that's what everybody else here is so courageous. We, the people, show courage in this room. Thousands across the US show courage in the streets, stating what's wrong in the signs of all kinds, and by consistently showing up, exercising our right to speak. And this very thing, this right, is threatened. Concerns about the Flock system remain. Early concerns were about unnecessarily surveillance. As layers of information are peeled away, disturbing findings of violations and illegal actions are happening all over the country. I'm proud of Illinois, because I grew up in Chicago, and go Bears. Jeff mentioned in the, in this business about what Flock does or doesn't do, they only take pictures of license plates. Soon after I first read that, I was also reading that Woodinville had just installed some Flock cameras in the Home Depot parking lot, so I'm not sure why. It must be a lot of criminal traffic driving through there. Who knows? So litigation problems with Flock are huge. You've heard other people speak this, you've probably read it yourself, and much doubt has been created with all these violations and agreements that get broken. Flock's information sharing with Homeland Security and ICE must not become our new normal. We don't need to participate in breaking down trust with one another, and our police, and in our whole community. Please cancel the Flock before it's ever installed.
Sam Doyle. You'll have five minutes at the podium.
I was thinking on my way to work today, I was heading to clinic at 6:15 this morning, and I thought, "What am I going to say again?" Because if my memory is correct, I think including an email I sent to you, this is the fifth time I've done this, which is incredibly frustrating. I'm very frustrated that we are not being listened to, that I'm not being listened to, that my neighbors aren't. My frustration is about 99 out of 100 today. And then I was thinking about comedy and sarcasm, and I thought, like, how could I kind of couch this in sort of a sarcastic, funny way? And also, this is after not a lot of sleep at 6:00 in the morning. So I thought, you know, what do we get for this product that nobody wants? What do we get for the money that you want to spend that we don't want you to spend? Here's what we get. We get a product that we don't need. Great, we already know that vehicle thefts compared 2024 first quarter, 2025 first quarter, and second quarter are actually down. We do not have a vehicle theft problem here. This is not a crime-ridden city. I am not, I live up the street. I am not afraid to walk anywhere in Mount Lake Terrace right now. So this idea that we have this incredibly scary city and that we need surveillance is just wrong. It's absolute fear-mongering, and I don't buy it. So, we get a product we don't need in four square miles. We're literally, we're a postage stamp. We're this tiny city. It's ridiculous to have this kind of tool in such a tiny city. What else do we get? So we get a product we don't need, we get a product we don't want, we get a relationship with a company that we know is blatantly dishonest and doesn't care at all about the law, or the Constitution, or you as an individual, or you as a population. So we get a relationship with them. We also, you also get, the city gets an invitation to litigation. There is no way that this is going to be installed and that you don't get sued. Your city attorney is 300 bucks an hour. That is a lot of money, a lot of money to spend on something that none of us want in the first place. Oh, you also get an opportunity to continue damaging the relationship with us. We're the ones who voted to put you in office, so you can continue to erode that relationship or you can back out now. Oh, another opportunity to endanger residents. So, you can say the Mount Lake Terrace Police are going to be prudent with their use of the data, but they can't control what Landwood does, they can't control what other cities do. So you can also endanger the relationship with us. You can also have a product that actually hasn't been shown except by their own studies to decrease crime. Flock doesn't actually decrease crime. Flock says it does because they're a sales company. It's a pitch, and unfortunately, a lot of you have fallen for it. Oh, another chance. You have an opportunity to overwork the records specialists you have. There is 0% chance that those cameras go up here, and you know, on like day one or two, someone's going to do a public records request, and you'll be in the same situation that Stanwood is right now, and then you get to pay them and your lawyer 300 bucks an hour to clean up that mess. You could avoid the whole thing. So, we're done with this as a community. I know it's hard to say you were wrong. It's hard to say you have new data and it's time to do something else, but it's a noble thing to do, it's a moral thing to do, and it's the right thing to do. We will respect you more as leaders if you frankly have the nerve to say, "You know what? We were wrong, we learned something, and we're going to go back." Because here's the thing, if you install it, there is no way that all of my neighbors here are going to go away. I know it. I know it. This is not going to end if the cameras got wopped. It will continue until you take them down. That's just the way it's going to be. Okay?
Ben, you have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Mayor Potem, and City Council members. Over the past few days, months, and even hours, as it would seem, much has come to light about how Flock has unfortunately misled Mount Lake Terrace along with dozens of other municipalities across the United States. I hope you have heard the news about how Flock has lied to their customers, about how data is being collected, how it's being accessed and shared, and when, and by who. I hope you have seen how information slurped up by this dragnet has been used and abused often to unfortunately suppress those who are very disadvantaged and terrified. I hope that you are aware of the serious legal questions surrounding data collection, data ownership, data use, particularly those raised by our neighbors in this room right now and who have testified in previous sessions, as well as from the city of Mount Lake Terrace itself. These are truly serious issues, and many of them are really, you know, they're unresolved and unanswered at this meeting, and tomorrow it will be the same case as well. This is why many municipalities have put a pause to their own implementations or even taken the bolder, correct move to cancel the contracts altogether. In the face of this new information that has either previously been unavailable or withheld from us, from you, elected leaders of these cities, of these, many of these cities have taken that information unavailable and slammed on the brakes. They've invited new scrutiny. They've set up better safeguards, and in some cases, they've decided that their cities could and would no longer do business with a vendor that lies, cheats, and misleads their customers. A vendor that does not expose not only the municipality to legal jeopardy, but also the residents that call this place their home on an epic scale. A vendor that is disinterested in the harm that their system causes and only concerned with the next quarter's profits. Tonight, I am calling on the City Council to reconsider its position on Flock camera systems and to cancel the Flock camera system contract, to not fall into the sunk cost fallacy. Before us lies a really dark path that we have been led down in many ways, but that does not mean that we need to take another step towards this abyss together. In your hands and in your voices lies the power to turn this around, to protect the city, its residents, its businesses, and its visitors from the harm imposed by the unscrupulous, predatory, and morally bereft vendor. It's important for me to remind everyone, too, that especially in this current climate that we find ourselves living in unfortunately, changing one's mind is not a sign of weakness. I think it's a sign of strength, and many will corroborate that. It's a sign of strength and leadership of being a human being, of being someone who's empathetic and willing to consider new perspectives, new information, especially when the truth has withheld or meaningfully willingly obfuscated from us by those with ulterior motives. In this increasingly chaotic time that we unfortunately find ourselves living in, we need to keep our minds and hearts open and empathetic. This is especially the case with this system that has demonstrated harm and significant legal liability. Mayor Potem Wall, I really want to thank you for continuing to bring this topic to the table and for listening to your constituents. Councilmember Page, I want you to know that I recognize and deeply appreciate you considering the new information that has been made available and to changing your position on Flock cameras. I think that shows great leadership, compassion, humility, traits that I have come to expect you in the time I've known you. I would also be remiss to not thank Councilmember Witterd and Councilmember Murray for representing the values and voices of the residents and taxpayers of Mount Lake Terrace and for voting against the contract to begin with. There is still time to make bold decisions, to listen to people who have and continue to express their love. We've heard a lot of messages of love tonight for the neighbors and for the city that we call home. It is not too late to right a wrong, to sift the legal battles and the harm, and to not take another step in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Next is Rai Castillo. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I've lived here for seven years. I really love this city, and I'm deeply concerned about Flock cameras being installed here, as many others have said. I've emailed the council members several times about this. I haven't been able to come to these meetings, but I am very concerned about this and wanted to speak up. I also wanted to mention I'm concerned with the way that many of you did not listen to Adam or did not appear to listen to Adam earlier. I saw many people getting up, moving around, not paying him due respect and attention, and I feel like this was very disrespectful for one of our constituents who is making a very valid claim about his concerns. So, I would encourage you to go back and watch the recording. I do want to say that I appreciate that the city has started to draft policies around the use of Flock cameras, but this is not enough. The Flock system is ripe for hacking and stalking, and it's a matter of when, not if, this will happen. If we allow our police force to contract with a for-profit, private company that has proven again and again to be irresponsible and unethical, then we will experience what Stanwood and Norfolk, Virginia, and Evanson, Illinois are going through right now. But it's not too late to stop this from happening. We can still cancel the contract, and I would urge the council to do exactly that. We may have already paid $27,000, but we should not let the sunk cost fallacy decide this for us. We still have time. We need to cancel this contract in the best interests of everyone here in Mount Lake Terrace. Thank you for your attention.
Victor, you're up again. You'll have five minutes.
Wow, a double hitter tonight. For the past several months, you've sat there and listened to people try to convince you away from Flock. I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to preach to the choir. If they can't convince you, there's nothing I can say or do to convince you. As far as privacy or surveillance goes, our technology is spending so much money and buying so much of the government. Privacy is nothing more than a fantasy. I realize that. Another 10 to 15 years, everyone will be required to have a computer chip implanted in their brain. It's going to happen unless people speak up loudly enough and make change of that. So, what I am going to ask is to hold off on the installation of any cameras until after a public vote. If you believe at all in democracy, I believe this is an issue important enough, it's been going on for several months. Please let the people of the city vote and speak their voice. Thank you.
Kira Fisk? You have five minutes.
My name is Kira Fisk. I'm new here, but I've lived in Mount Lake Terrace for nine years, and I oppose the installation of Flock cameras. Flock looms heavy over my head. As a member of a beautifully diverse neighborhood in a nation that has legalized racial profiling, Flock looms heavy over my head. As a woman in a nation where reproductive rights are constantly under siege, Flock looms heavy over my head. As a citizen who exercises First Amendment rights in a nation that is retaliating against the wrong message, Flock looms heavy over my head. I believe this sentiment is felt by many people in this room here tonight. Flock has become a giant cloud over our community, and I find myself wondering, are we setting ourselves up for an authoritarian takeover? A few months ago, that would have felt like a ridiculous question to ask. It does not feel ridiculous anymore, so please do not obey in advance by installing the system. Please be brave and protect our rights. Please be an example to community engagement to other Democratic leaders around the nation by reversing the decision to install Flock. Demonstrate that the people who put you in power, who are speaking to you from their hearts, doing all this research, collecting all this data to convince you to please stop the process, please listen. Show what leadership is. We voted for you to listen to us, so please do that. Please lift the weight off of our shoulders, off of our community's shoulders. You guys have put so much time and effort into something with a partner who's not going to listen to you. They don't care. They don't care how smart your lawyers are. They don't care how well you write a memorandum of understanding. They're not going to do what they say they're going to do. And I want to be able to trust you to listen to us and please stop the installation process. Do not move forward. And Victor, I think that's a great idea. I've been wondering why we haven't gotten to vote on whether or not we want Flock in our community, and I think that's a great idea. So, that's all I got to say. Sorry, I got so emotional.
That concludes public testimony as far as people who have signed up. Mayor Potem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to close the public hearing.
Second. So, it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. I don't have that information here.
So, I think now council can discuss the ordinance for the Community Policing Advisory Board, the resolution on the statement of values, and the policy, the revised policy. Happy to answer any questions council may have on any of those documents.
All right. Are there any questions first?
And Mayor, I also wanted to mention that Flock cameras have not been installed here in Mount Lake Terrace, and we are pausing the installation of those cameras until the currently legal situation sorts itself out. So, that's a decision that we made internally based on the information from Cedro, Willie, and Stanwood, and Linwood as well.
All right. So, Councilmember Page?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want a couple of comments, and I'm going to start with the word pause because, and I'm just going to, let's just talk about pause for a minute. Because, you know, the word pause, you know, as a noun is a temporary stop, or it can be looked at as a temporary inaction, especially as caused by uncertainty, hesitation. Pause is a reason or cause for pausing. There's some words that I can throw out at you about the word pause. A lull, an interruption, a recess, a breath, maybe a deep breath, a break, a rest. As a verb, to hesitate, break. You know, to pause means to stop temporarily or to halt an activity. As a verb, to stop doing something for a short time or to hesitate. To stop something for a temporary period so it can be resumed. To stop and think or to take a short break from an action. The one that really jumps out at me, though, is as a reason to stop. The idiom given pause means something causes hesitation or uncertainty, making you consider stopping or thinking again. So, I think about if, when we pause this event, that is the one thing that we have in common right now with the company Flock. Because you remember, we found out that they had a test going on in one city, and they denied that they had anything going on with Homeland Securities until they got caught, and then they paused it. So, when I think of these definitions of pause, I ask myself the question, when is it going to be resumed? I ask myself the question, and I can't stop asking myself the question, what was the test for? Over 5,000, I believe, locations have Flock. When did these communications and discussions with Homeland Security begin with Flock? And why did it take until May to turn it on? I can only speculate, and that's all I'm doing is speculating, but I'm guessing that, you know, these conversations took place long before May. I'm speculating that Homeland Security, who I don't trust very well right now, and I've got a brother-in-law who retired from Homeland Security, I trust him, and that they needed enough data to see how they could react with Flock cameras in the community. And then they started in one location. You know, I worked in corporate America where we built buildings, locations, hubs, and we didn't just throw 20, 30 buildings at one time. We built one at a time to see how it was going to work out in the area that we was working it out in. And if it met our expectations, then we added other buildings so that we can do what we needed to do. We know that in May, they started the test. On June 5th, everybody that was in the room, I think it was almost 15, 20 folks talking about, and ourselves at this table, some of us expressed the one concern, the, that one item that would be a deal breaker. Don't do business with ICE. Don't do business with Homeland Security. And I'm just going to throw this out to my peers. I've been thinking about this example. I don't know if anybody in this room would, if you had a lot of work to do in your, in your home, and you hired a general contractor, and you sat down with that general contractor, and that general contractor is going to have subcontractors to do the work that needs to be done, because there's a lot of work to be done. And you sit down with your contractor, and you said, I like this. This is going to work for me. It's going to get the things done that I want to get done. However, I've got one concern. There is a subcontractor that I've heard you've done some work with, you're considering doing some work with, and I hope you're no longer doing work with that contractor, and definitely I hope that the contractor doesn't come to my property. And the general contractor never says, nope, I'm not doing any work with that individual because, whatever. And then you find out that the general contractor is doing business with their subcontractor right around the corner. That was, and that was the drop, that was the drop-dead deal, deal breaker, but they never revealed that to you. I ask myself the question, how many people around the table would say, that's okay, I'm going to go ahead and do business with this person because they didn't tell me the truth. They knew what my concern was, but they just didn't tell me so that they could continue the deal. That's my problem. You know, someone said something today about feeling right, feeling wrong. For me, I think that when I put people in my circle, you know, I expect them to have moral fiber. I expect them to have strong character. I expect them to have unchallengeable integrity. And I believe that when businesses do business, they should expect the same thing of whoever it is that they're having business with. Morality, character, and integrity. It feels wrong to have Flock on our streets. It feels wrong to have Flock on our city. It feels wrong to have Flock in my life just because of those three things. I don't, I think they lack morality. I think they lack character, and I think they lack the integrity that's going to be beneficial for this city. So, we're going to be talking about all these other things. I think we should really first start considering the possibility, the reality of the need to just cancel the contract. to just cancel the contract.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if we're going to actually talk about the Community Policing Advisory Board, and if we want to continue that conversation, and is this something we'd like to do?
Okay.
Well, he brought up the word pause. So, you know, I addressed that, okay? Because he brought up the word pause.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Somer, did you have something?
Yes, I brought it up at the beginning of the meeting. I was trying to go down through the attachments, and the first one was establishing the policing advisory board. And I know it was typed in 1996, but I started on the police board in 1997. And we stopped that commission quite a while ago because there was not enough activity, and people had dropped off. But now, with National Night Out, which was started in 1997, and looking at the police statistics and the stats and the crimes in locations, I believe it's important that we reestablish that board in general, educate people on what's going on with the crimes in the area, if they're feeling safe in the area. We used to teach self-defense classes when I worked at the college. We took, we taught self-defense up there as well. We have vulnerable people in the area, and so it's good to make sure that we're looking out for those people in vulnerable areas and keeping them safe. And I think it's important to restart the policing board back up.
So we're going to then talk about the police board. Anyone else want to put their input in on this? So, Councilmember Pretamwall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, strongly support and appreciate the pause, postponing implementation of Flock. I think it's the right thing to do. That said, I agree that one positive, definitely positive thing that's come of all of this is relooking at the Community Policing Advisory Board as a tool for a lot of things that we can do right in this community. When it dissipated several, six years ago, eight years ago, whenever it was, I was disappointed then because I thought there was a lot of great, they had a, they had a plan of what they wanted to do, that they had kept talking to council about, that I was really excited about. And then, for a variety of reasons, it went away. So I'm excited to see it come back, and I think there's a lot of positive things that it can do. And, and one, and so I appreciate that we are taking another look at it and potentially going to re-adopt our Community Policing Advisory Board. I think it has, like, you know, many, many things, many positive aspects. There is one clause in there as far as duties that specifically relates to Flock and being an independent, if I can find the language. But I was going to suggest that however, that we actually, and I had got this from Audrey Meyer here, some language that might be better to say, to review new technologies that will be, probably should have my eyes for this, sorry. Presented to city council and provide independent review of the purposes of those technologies, and then such as Flock system or something like that. So in other words, it broadens it to not just Flock, whether, depending on what happens with Flock and the issues involved currently, but any other new technologies or systems that may come up in the future. And have, be an opportunity to review a broader sense of, of new, new potential challenges, opportunities, things that we may be coming before us in the future. So that was just some suggested language that we might want to consider as far as, in addition to not just Flock, not limiting it to Flock, but expand it to other potential things.
Just to be clear, 2.40, 0.050A6, we would switch out the word, or the words, Flock license plate readers with new technologies. Just want to make sure I have that right.
I believe that's correct. I need to, yeah, okay, to review new technologies that would be provided to city council and provide independent review. So, and we may want to put in, I don't know what folks think about, if it's important to cite such as. I just want to, I think the idea is to expand it beyond just the Flock, regardless of what happens in the future, but expand it beyond that and maybe put in, but I don't know if it's important to include a reference to such as Flock, so it can, so it's covered.
Yeah, so I think some language that is typically used in that, in those instances, is to review new technologies, including but not limited to Flock.
That, that sounds good to me. That's already, good with that?
Councilmember Somer?
I just want to ask, does that open the city up to liability issues based on what you're saying with new technology? Because I'm understanding that that police board would be privileged to see information that would be about other citizens. I guess I would want to understand what you mean and what they're doing with the new technology, because I don't know what's coming in the future. And I don't know what that exactly means. And what information and records are provided.
Go ahead, and Councilmember Pretamwall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the intent is, so first of all, looking at the language as it stands. To review the Flock license plate reader program and provide independent review of the purposes for access. The idea, that in itself is to provide an independent review, and this is, the Community Policing Advisory Board is just a body that's, that's going to be charged with several items, including reviewing the Flock policy and how it's used. And provide feedback to, you know, review it and feedback to the community, to the council, as to how it's being used and, and, you know, audits of, you know, the audit logs, et cetera, of how it's being used so that it's, you know, or transparent in how, what information we are, what we're using it for, how it's being used, and, and et cetera. So the idea of this change would just broaden it, so it's, so we're not focusing just on Flock, right? And we're, we're, we're recognizing that there are going to be future issues, challenges, technologies coming forward, and this body would then have the ability to review those other things as well.
So what does it mean by independent review of metrics? What does that mean, independent? So I'm thinking if there's a new technology, it's under, first it's under the DEI Commission, and then there's another commission, members of residents with relative expertise and insight. And I think it needs a period, the subcommittee will meet with the police department regularly to review metrics such as audit logs. I'm not sure what the audit logs are. The usage data, I'm not sure what that is. Agreements entered into with other police agencies, I don't know what that is. Reports to the community regularly during open meetings, so they'll give us a report. I'm not sure how often, to ensure our commitment to public safety, accessibility, and transparency. I hope that's always there. But I'm not sure what a lot of this means. And that's why I'm asking about the technology, because I'm not sure what that means either.
Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Pretamwall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And to clarify, that, I think the language that you're referring to is in the resolution for the community values. So that's not in the Community Policing Advisory Board.
I guess I'm putting it all in. I guess I don't know what some of this stuff means. And if I had that responsibility to look at some of that stuff, you know, is there hold harmless? I can't say it to other people, or, you know, it's just like, what kind of data? Because everyone's talking about privacy here, so if I'm giving this commission to look into all these records and stuff, what does that mean? I mean, I'm not sure what were our community values, and then the police board would look at, and what they're responsible for. It's just kind of, oh, I, I just don't understand.
Mayor Pretamwall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me try and, so first of all, just to clarify, none of that language is actually in the Community Policing Advisory Board. So we'll come back to, I'm going to put a pause on, maybe pause is the wrong charge term right now, but pause on that for a moment and then, and try and address, I think, what Councilmember Somer is getting at as far as the variety of things that we are looking to do in, in providing transparency and the guardrails. What we're hoping the advisory board would do is review how the system is being used, including what's, what's been, you know, in several other, you know, the policy and the value statement, and what we've talked about as far as doing, pulling audit logs. So in other words, and we, again, we have no access to all the average data. The only thing that gets pulled that we would even have an audit, have an audit on would be when we or an agency we have a memorandum of understanding with asks for a license plate to be able, because a specific crime or issue, you know, lost stolen car, et cetera, has been reported, and, and we run that specific license plate. So that then becomes part of the log that, you know, the list of data of all the different that may be collected over a certain time period. So I think it was every couple of months or something, quarterly, quarterly, that we would, then, based on that data that's pulled from any, only from license plates that have been requested through the system because of a specific crime that's been of concern, or trying to track down a vehicle that may be involved with that crime. So that, that's what's, then becomes part of the data. And then of that data, we would pull 20 records to review as an audit, to see specifically how that, to just ensure that we're doing it, it's being used correctly. And then be able to report that out to council and to the public so that we're all familiar and aware of what's happening, how it's being used. And, and so that's the, that's the review that I think that we're getting at. I don't have that part of the document up for maybe the rest of the language you were asking about. So let me get over to the resolution. Okay, so then, so, and so that's the metrics. So what we talked about, we'll meet with the police department regularly to review the metrics important to the community, such as published audit logs. So that's what I tried to hopefully explain. I don't know if it was clear or not, but, so that's the audit logs, usage data, and agreements entered into with other police agencies. So in other words, other police agencies are the people that we're having, we enter into a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, with these other agencies. And, and so, again, it's about transparency and ensuring we're all aware of who we are agreeing to share this information with.
Councilmember Page?
I guess, and I think probably to, to Councilmembers, Somer's point is, these two paragraphs here in the, the statement of values spells out, you know, what the council, what the advisory board would be doing. Why wouldn't that be in item 240, 0506? Because 0506 is just one sentence, but down here in the statement, it's really detailing what it is that number six is actually going to be doing. So why wouldn't that be there? Because it doesn't say that in six. But this down below in the statement of values, it actually details what it is that they're going to be doing with Flock. Right?
No, I, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that's a valid point. And I think maybe we find a way to expand, so getting back to the, just reviewing new technologies, but then expand that, so expand it to include new, new technologies such as not, or not including, including but not limited to Flock system. And then we talk about, we can talk about, including, put in some language about specifically what we're looking to do. If, such as those things, a list that's in here.
All right. Well, Councilmember Murray and then Somer.
Can I make a suggestion on this? I have things to say, but I want to weigh in, I guess, on the conversation around verbiage, around the specific issue. I think it would be easier to just split it into two separate items, like here, that we need to cover new and, you know, like future technology. I think I appreciated the suggestion. And also here, that it probably makes sense, since there's specificity in the council community values, that we should probably then have that, that specificity included in the, the Community Policing Advisory Board's duties so that they have clarity, and it's not something that's referenced later, that they're like, I had no idea that that existed. So I mean, I think we could do both, and probably instead of trying to put it into one, it makes sense to just have a seven, would be my suggestion.
Councilmember Somer?
Yes, I'd like more information from other cities who have Flock cameras and who have experiences, what they've done, what they've learned, what they're doing with their communities. We're kind of doing this blindly, and we haven't learned from other cities. And we heard today that we're going to not put them in right away. We're trying to learn from that. But there's other cities, there's many other cities who have them, and I would love to share some testimonies from them on what's going on and what it's done for their cities. Because do they have police commissions that do this, or do they have other commissions that do this? And then we'd know exactly what they need to look at. Because it says independent review, and to me, when I do an independent review, that's being audited by somebody else. So the independent review, I guess you could say that the independent is the committee, but the way it's written, you could read into it and say, well, give me the data, and I'm going to have an independent review upon it. And so that would be an audit. And so there's lots of different ways to look at the information that's been put in here. And then, you know, also talk about other duties and different things. That would make it kind of appeasing to other people to look at the different activities that the police board also does. Because I just don't want to think that that's all they're going to do is just look at Flock cameras. You know, it would be nice to see other information as well.
All right. Mayor Pretamwall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think that's a valid point. It's not intended to be an independent, another, a separate independent body. It's the, so I think maybe we, maybe we can revise the language there slightly to, to ensure that the independent review is by the Community Policing Advisory Board. That is the independent, that's what the intended language is supposed to do. So maybe we need to reframe that or rephrase that slightly to ensure, and then, yeah, and we're not looking to somebody else to audit, it's going to be the Community Policing Advisory Board that would be auditing a, you know, small set of the data that's collected over a certain quarterly.
And then it also says a published data log. Does that mean it's published into the community? Or is it published within the city, is it published within the police department, published within Flock? So those are the items that would need clarification.
Mayor Pretamwall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, and, and that's, we can certainly clarify it, but the intent, again, behind published is to transparency, just posting it on the website and sharing it with the community so that the community is aware. We're not trying to, you know, we're not trying to hide anything, right? So in other words, the information that is collected by the advisory board is then shared with, you know, during council meetings, shared with the public. with, you know, during council meetings, shared with the public, published in, in our, on our website so the community can go look and see exactly how it's being used.
They're, they're going to see a published audit log? We're going to put that on our website?
Yes, again, the 20 records indicating, and again, this is, we're not disclosing, you know, the actual crime, you know, the, like the license plate or anything like that. What we're, I think the log would just indicate this, this record was pulled because of a lost or stolen vehicle. So we're, we're able to understand what, what the request was and why the record was pulled and then just tell the public that that's what, that's how the system is being used.
And so we're only limited to 20, 20 per month, 20 per week?
Per quarter.
20 per year?
Yeah, quarterly. So they'll run the-
You're only going to see 20 of them every three months? But see, see how much you have to explain it to me where I'm reading into what could That's what I'm trying to get at, is we're talking already about how people are wanting to protect their privacy and stuff. And we've talked about cameras at Home Depot. We've talked about, you know, Google being sued. They're getting money back from Facebook. And I'm just trying to get in here to understand some of this, these issues that want to be in the police board.
Yeah, I guess the question is how specific do we get in the ordinance describing the duties of the Community Policing Advisory Board versus what generally, you know, what generally do we want them to do, yet be specific enough that we're ensuring transparency and openness and putting sufficient guardrails on what we expect from the system?
So from, basically from what I've heard this evening, that this language needs considerably more work. Yeah, I, two things. First, I desperately need a break. Second, if we can come to a conclusion tonight, what, what I want to try to get away from is talking about each phrase in the Community Policing Board code section. The reason, the way I wrote that was based on direction from the council. If there's something specifically that needs to be changed, let me know what that is and I'll make those changes, okay? I would be, be more than happy to make those changes in order to make this discussion a little bit easier. But there are, before you vote or before you direct any changes, I just want to make very clear that the language is tied to, the resolution as well. So when you, when you make that vote or make that direction or decision, just understand that that's how the resolution will change as well. Just, I don't want to keep anybody in the dark about that.
Councilmember Sonmore.
So what I'm hearing is because on our recommended staff report, staff recommendations are nothing. It says NA. So you're saying that the way it's written, that the city endorses how the police board was written, and you're recommending that we vote on it as is. I'm fine with that you want to vote it on it as is. I will make that motion right now, but I'm just saying that I think there needs to be either a supplement to this or just to make sure that everybody understands what it's going to entail.
Sure, most of this was taken directly from the 1986 one, or 96. The changes were made, as I outlined during the presentation, a number of folks on the commission and the specific, excuse me, duties that they, they're directed to do. If there's discussion over the one item about, you know, whether FLOC, whether we add new technologies, we can come up with language. The suggestion by Councilmember Murray to split it into two, the two include but not, or including but not limited to language, there's a number of different ways that we can separate those two things out.
So just to clarify, we're going to add the, that information onto the police board about what they would be reviewing?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm proposing anyway.
So, go ahead.
Then I would make a motion to accept the police board ordinance with those updates. Well, you can if there's a motion on the table.
We can have more discussion.
Yeah, I think the, the motion is, is on the table. If there's a second, then council can go to discussion.
Okay, wants to do a second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We don't need to vote on that. Okay, so now we can go into discussion. Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I guess I want to start with just saying thank you to everybody who showed up. I know that, that some of you are still here and watching and, and know that, at least I hear you. I hear that there was not a lot of feedback around what we are specifically talking about, but an overwhelming desire to not move forward with this. Right, I'm speaking about, yeah, the police board. Are you the mayor?
Well, we're, we're on this, you're, you're going to be going to that topic. Because I, because all I heard was you thanking and then you're going to go to the next topic.
Thank you. If I'd had a chance to speak before the motion was made, maybe we would feel differently. But what is before us today, which is what I was getting to, is an opportunity, from my perspective at least, I think there's probably frustration that we are talking about ways to, you know, provide oversight and more visibility and transparency. I will always work to get to what I believe is the best interest of our community and what is before us right now is what I believe is an opportunity to get to a better outcome. I, I think there is a lot of value to reinstating the Community Police Advisory Board and not just in relationship to the oversight of FLOC, but because they are doing a lot of other things that are very clearly spelled out by the duties of this board. You know, I, I think particularly enhancing police community relations is incredibly important. I think talking about review and making recommendations concerning police department policies, procedures and programs, I think it would have been a great opportunity to have some of these conversations earlier and perhaps, you know, would have, would have led to a different or at least a, you know, better understood outcome in, in these conversations. And so very supportive of moving forward with this. I generally like the language and appreciative for Jeff. I know he, he's not here at the moment, but appreciative that he has taken the time to listen to feedback and hear feedback. I do want to make actually a substantive suggestion though, that I would love feedback on from this, from, from my colleagues, and that's under the composition of the board. And so it wasn't something I'd really thought about until I was thinking about us potentially passing this and moving to next steps. And so I was looking at kind of, you know, I appreciated the context of we're lowering the members from 10, which is where it historically was, to seven in this proposed new advisory board ordinance, because it's consistent with what we're doing on other boards and commissions. And I think what isn't consistent in what we're doing on other boards and commissions is the specificity of a number of the members. And I, my concern with that is that we may be setting ourselves up to not be successful from the go. My understanding is some of the challenge in the past was that we had, that, that folks were not as engaged as they could be. What we have traditionally done with our boards and commissions is we've cast a wide net and folks come and they share their, their experience and their interests. And we try to ensure that we compose and propose and then vote on as a full council, you know, a diverse and, you know, thoughtful group of folks who really do want to be engaged with the city. My concern with some, with having so many different specific criteria for the members of this board is that we may have trouble filling those. And if we have trouble filling those, are we setting the board up to potentially not be successful from the go? I think in addition to that, I have a little bit of concern around the use of our diversity, equity and inclusion commissioners as our liaison to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. While they are, have all been very supportive of helping wherever they have been asked to, they have a significant body of work and we just passed, you know, our strategic plan that, that includes more work for them. And they are going to have a new subcommittee of community ambassadors. And I just, I, I think we have, one, it wasn't part of their ask when they signed up for, for the DEI commission to also take on responsibilities of this board. I think if one of them or multiple of them were interested, I, I think we would absolutely interview them and it shouldn't be a disqualifier. But again, I just, I think that requirement makes it more challenging and is asking more of a group of commissioners that is already doing a lot of work and spending a lot of time volunteering within the city. And then I would actually say, and it's going to probably surprise folks because I know I've advocated for student representation all over the place. I actually think taking, I'm going to say pause on that, on that high school representative is, is maybe the right plan of action at this moment too. And I say that because, you know, I think we've seen when we start a new commission as we did, and this isn't starting a new commission, but I mean, it's essentially restarting a commission. When we restarted the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission, there was, you know, I think it takes a little while to kind of get the commission going in a direction where I, I don't know that, I think it's a fair ask for one high school student to come into a brand new commission and, and to have to navigate, I, I think what may potentially be some, some initial growing pains. So I don't know. I guess I would love to see us start with a place of the board shall consist of seven members. I'm all for at least five of them being residents of Mount Lake Terrace, or I would even be willing to increase that. But I think all of the rest of those are great potential sources for, for, for board appointees. But I, I think we should leave it more broad. And then again, if we want to revisit it in a year and add a student member or if we want to add more specificity, because we, we feel like that would serve value that isn't being served currently by casting a wider net, we could. But I just, I guess I want to see us be successful. I think this is a great program and I know we have interested and engaged community members because we talk about it every time we make board and commission appointments, like we always have more amazing folks and spaces to put them. And I would love to ensure that we can choose the folks who are, you know, best representative of our community and interested in serving holy versus maybe having openings that we just can't fill. So that would be my only substantive change. And Jeff, just so you, like, just a change in terms of the composition of the board, leaving it broad. Okay, cool. Thank you Deputy City Manager.
All right, I, I see Councilmember Woodard first and then Ryan.
I'll keep mine short. Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I, I had a different reaction to the student. I actually was curious to learn why we wanted it to be a student who is attending Mount Lake Terrace High School as opposed to a student with a Mount Lake Terrace address? Because I'm just thinking, you know, our IB students go to Edmonds-Woodway. And that's not to say IB students are going to have a better perspective, but they still live in my city, right, in our city. And then the homeschool students as well. In my experience, that group has been looking for opportunities and is making sure we're not inadvertently excluding them unless we were looking specifically for something out of Mount Lake Terrace High School where they clearly wouldn't have that insight. So I could go either way. I had the honor of being the liaison during the 2044 and our student, you would have not known she was a student. She handled herself, or maybe it was they, I don't remember now, pronouns, but the student was full, fully engaged is what I would say, which is just my way of saying, I could have them wait or we could have them join now. But again, I would just make sure that in limiting it to a student at Mount Lake Terrace High is because we want something specifically out of there as opposed to we want that age group's perspective, which is what I think we're looking for.
Yeah, it was, the council has expressed a desire to include youth in a lot of different boards and commissions. So we wanted to offer an opportunity for a student that's 16 to 18 years old. We chose Mount Lake Terrace High School because obviously they're part of our community, whether they have a Mount Lake Terrace address or not. But I don't think it is extremely important to have somebody from the high school as opposed to somebody from, you know, the age group 16 to 18 that lives here. It's why we wrote in there that five of the members had to be citizens of the community in case someone lives in, you know, Breyer or wherever but attends Mount Lake Terrace High School. The other part of that was the, the business representative. So either way.
Oh, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Given all the questions regarding this police advisory board, I know we have a motion on the table, we're doing discussion, but I would, because more language and work is needed on this, more discussion is needed on this, so therefore more time is needed on this. After this motion is done, I, I would recommend tabling this indefinitely so we could further analyze it because it's 9:25 now. We do have some people waiting for three more items on our agenda. And we've got lots of more work and perspectives for this and discussions I haven't even talked about. I used to be the liaison for the police advisory board and for three years we worked, one of our tasks was to put together the national night out. So that's another aspect. But be, in, with all that, we have, we need more time. So now's, I, I, I wouldn't vote for this. I would, after that, this discussion and that, and whatever you guys, everybody decides, if it fails, I would table it indefinitely so we could work on it later. Okay? And I totally not sure on the, because you can only have one motion on the floor at one time. And I don't think this would be an amendment.
We have to vote on this and then-
But it's, if you could help me with it, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just to clarify, if, if we agree that, if, if we agree that we want to make some additional changes to the language, both addressing the, the FLOC system and new technologies and, and duties related as well as the makeup of the membership, which I support by the way, I think it makes sense to be consistent with other, our other boards and commissions. So we could, we could ask the city manager, we could move to, in the middle of the motion, we can move to table the motion until the next, you know, meeting or whenever and let the city manager address, you know, based on the input we received tonight, come back with a new draft language that we could present to the council for at our next meeting. That's-
So we can do that. I can't say that it's going to be at the next meeting. I think we can say at a future meeting when we can, we can, what, yeah, there's room on the calendar because this is obviously a very robust discussion.
And we can't have a committee? Well, we'll vote on it first and then we have to, no? All right. We-
Yeah. Sorry, you're the-
That's what I was talking about.
I think you can do it either way. You can table the motion or you can vote on the motion and then make a motion to table it indefinitely.
Okay, so we already have this on, the motion has already been made.
Yeah, the motion's on the table with amendments about the students and the members. It would be removing 2.40, point 20B. And then D, we could remove Mount Lake Terrace High School and it would be a student in Mount Lake Terrace, could be homeschool, could be going to Woodway. And those were, and then we had the other information about the FLOC cameras in there. And those were the amendments to it.
So when we vote right now, it is-
If, if I may, I think, given the discussion here, I think the better way to do it would be to vote on the motion on the floor and then come back and make a motion to- be to vote on the motion on the floor and then come back and make a motion to direct me to, you know, update the language, and then we'll bring it back at a future meeting. I think that'd be much cleaner.
Okay, so what we're voting on right now is to, to vote to, to accept this?
Yeah, the motion on the floor and that was seconded is to accept it as presented.
As presented, okay. So then I can say, I can just call for the vote? Is there another thing we have to do before we call? And then, and then we just remake another, depending on how we all vote? All right. All in favor of accepting this as is?
Well, I amended the motion, so, but now you're telling me I can't amend my emotion. I don't know if I'm gonna be censored again.
No, I'm not telling you you can't. You haven't.
I just said...
Sorry, we haven't moved to amend it yet.
But we didn't even acknowledge it.
We did. Okay, so now we're voting...
Yeah, but we have an amendment to the motion. Yeah, you can do that. You can amend your emotion.
Was your amendment seconded?
Wait, I don't know. Did we call for a second?
Didn't know that a motion had been made.
Yeah, I said I'd call for, with the amendment of, and then I specifically said what the amendments were.
So, if the amendment was not seconded, can we just vote on this as presented? And then if it doesn't go, then we'll ask for...
Well, I'll just remove my amendment because it's not gonna pass. I can already tell by the looks in the room.
Okay. So, the amended motion has been removed without a second. The original motion is on the floor with a second. So then, yes, now you can call the vote, and we'll determine what actions to take after that.
All right, so this is all in favor to vote for this as presented?
Correct.
All in favor? Okay. All opposed?
Opposed.
Nay.
No.
I was staying.
All right, so it does not pass, and so now we...
Now, there's a motion to be made to table this ordinance directing me to make the language changes or to develop language that would meet the desires of council that you've expressed.
With all the changes that Councilmember Salmore also added?
Correct.
All right. So now, who's gonna make that motion? Mayor Pretem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to postpone...
Table.
Table this item until the city manager has had a chance to revise the language based on tonight's discussion and bring it back to us at a future meeting.
Second.
With your change, with your changes? Would you like to discuss it? Anyone? Go ahead, Councilmember Salmore.
Yes, and then my other discussion before that was to meet with other police chiefs that are using FLOC to find out their information as well and to have them to present when we're gonna be talking about FLOC next. And that would be something that would go into the police board ordinance, or whatever you wanna call it, amendment into our ammissible codes when we look at all the information that's coming back to us.
Okay, so we'll add that to the...
Don't need to make that a motion. We'll do that as a matter of course. I cannot promise that other police chiefs will come to present to our city council, but I can promise that we'll get their input.
Councilmember Page.
When, when our chief and their department put together their policies, wasn't that through a collaboration with police departments that already had policies?
Yes.
Or did they do that from scratch?
No. This was several other communities that have FLOC. Everett, I believe, was one. I can't think of the others, but they were, there were discussions, yes.
So now we're gonna vote on the postponing?
For a second.
We had a motion, and then we seconded it. Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just wanna make sure I know where we landed, and I'm flexible either way, but I think the high school student, I suggested one thing. I think Councilmember Woodard had a different suggestion. I'm not opposed to his suggestion either. I think we have language in the DEI commissions. That's where we don't have actually consistency across our other commissions. We do have a youth member of the DEI commission, and there's language about where they live and go to school that I think we could replicate and have worked through, or we could not. Again, I'm a fan of youth serving, and I just wanna make sure we're setting them up for success.
We will present language to you for your discussion.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Plus, we can always bring what we, you know, any language that, you know, we can always, we have an open door with the city manager to add or whatever, so... Okay. All right, so now are we voting on the changes? The tabling? We're voting on the tabling? It's been, the motion has been made and it has been seconded? And so now we're gonna vote on tabling this for a future meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
So, the only other discussion, or I'll just state what I believe the consensus to be, is in the resolution and the statement of values, every, or the consensus of the council is to continue with the community police advisory board and not with the subcommittee. So, we'll remove that other paragraph from the resolution when we bring that back. That'll be the diversion.
Okay, so now, Mayor Pretem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, great job, thank you, by the way, with the policy and MOU and the resolution statement of values. I think that we have very sufficiently and effectively incorporated the feedback that we heard and the, what, you know, what we heard from, from the community and particularly the group that worked on the language that got incorporated in here. So, thank you for getting that addressed. The one single issue that I heard back from, from folks on was, instead of using the term ICE, use the word federal, federal agencies, sharing, sharing with federal, with federal agencies, not just ICE. Because the concern is definitely how ICE is using it, but using, potentially could use FLOC system data. But it can be misused by other agencies as well. And the idea is that we're not, we didn't adopt this system for that purpose, and the intent is for local, us to be using it locally.
Councilmember Salmore?
So, what you just said, Councilman Wall, what if it's a federal case that the license plates tied to, we are unable now to bring that into a court of law to pursue somebody who committed a crime?
If I may, subpoena overrides local policy.
Oh, there you go. We don't always do that.
And Mayor, if I, if I might, I know that the time for changes to the agenda was several hours ago. But the review of the ordinance adopting the transportation impact fees, that's item number nine on your agenda. Our team has several consultants here with them this evening to talk about that. So, if it's okay with you, I'd like to move item nine up to item seven and move the rest of the items down. And then I think it's probably a very good idea at this point to just make a motion to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock, again.
Past 11?
10, at this point.
All right. Mayor Pretem Wall, who wants to... Do you wanna take a...
Yeah.
Okay. Then we'll be back at 9:45? Oh, go ahead. My God, that is wrong. Mayor Pretem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to extend the meeting to 10:30, hopefully?
So, it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hopefully we won't, but, and now we're gonna take a five-minute break until 36, until, until 40. Oh, no, the 41, 9:41. We're back in session, and Mayor Pretem Wall, did you wanna make a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to, move item nine up to seven and then renumber subsequently.
Second. So, it's been moved? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are now in sequence. Thank you. Oh, so the next presentation is gonna be the review of the ordinance adopting transportation impact fees with our city engineer Rich Meredith and traffic engineer John Merrick. Wasn't that the name of the Elephant Man? John Merrick?
Hi, thank you, everybody. We're here to discuss our traffic impact fee program, and we're providing it from the previous program. Thank you, everybody. We're here to talk about our traffic impact fee program. We revamped this program from previous years to take advantage of the newer legislation and some of the guidance that's out there. I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Rich Meredith. I'm our city engineer. Next to me...
I'm John Merrick, the city traffic engineer.
And then we have two consultants with us from the firm of fear and peers.
Hi, I'm Ariel Davis.
And I'm Kendra Brayhund.
So, Ariel and Kendra have been working with us for the last six months at least to try to revamp our program and bring it up to kind of the current practice. So, I'm gonna go through our slideshow here, there. So, the purpose that we're here for is to update our traffic impact fee analysis, the way that we computed the impact fees, and make sure that we're in conformance with our new comprehensive plan, the Vision 2044. Today, we're gonna go over the background, the types of projects that we can fund with a TIF, why we're gonna update the program, the mechanics of doing the fee calculations, the different projects that we picked for the list, and a comparison of the TIF rates from around the area and the state. So, this program touches on four council goals. You know, we need a traffic impact fee to help fund some of the projects that we're gonna need to grow our community, both making multimodal connections and handle any growth that we're experiencing. The responsible governance task is, we need these improvements in order to maintain our level of service based on the growth that we're expecting. We're informing and engaging our community. We had a, an open house where we asked for public input on some of the projects that we had picked to see if there were any others. And again, the environmental sustainability component is because we were trying to do more active transportation and alternative trips to vehicles. The legislative history, the last time the TIF was updated in 2016, at that time, it was using an index that WashDOT maintained that became something that we didn't have access unless we paid for it. So, we changed our index in 2018, and then in 2024, we made some amendments to our codes to account for low-income exemptions. Is this where you were gonna dive in? So, what's an impact fee? It's a one-time charge, a new development has to pay. It's authorized by the Growth Management Act, 1990. One of the important key points of an impact fee is it's for projects, or actually the portion of projects that add capacity to the transportation system. This is really important because it can't be used for existing deficiencies. If we have an existing sidewalk, but we're not doing anything to improve growth, we can't fund a replacement of that sidewalk. We have to have some nexus to show that we're adding capacity or something to accommodate growth. The fees that we collect, after 10 years, they expire, so it's on the city to track those fees and make sure that we're applying them to some of the different projects that we have within 10 years. There's four types of impact fees that we collect here at the city. We have fire impact fees, we have park impact fees, there's school impact fees out there, and we're talking about our transportation fees tonight. These are the type of projects that are funded by our traffic impact fees. It's more than just streets and roads. You know, now we're looking to update it to bike facilities, upgrades of intersections to improve efficiency and capacity, pedestrian facilities, multi-use paths, and in some cases, we'll have right-of-way acquisition to support these growth projects. Why we update the program, we're, this is to ensure that we are collecting enough revenue to build these projects to meet our current needs and the future growth. These projects that we've got in our list are to help align us with the current plans and policies, and it's also to improve our safety and make our transportation system more accessible. So, I'm gonna turn this over to our consultants now.
Thank you. So, first, we just wanna talk here about the fee program mechanic. So, this slide walks through the methods that are used to calculate the city's updated impact fee rate, and these steps are following the guidance that's laid out in state law. So, first off, the TIF project list is identified from the adopted transportation element of the comprehensive plan or the Transportation Improvement Program. And then those projects are evaluated for impact fee eligibility. So, as Rich mentioned, we look to see if those projects enhance capacity or don't, or if they're just maintenance projects. So, anything that is, does not enhance capacity or is just maintenance is removed. And then for the remaining projects, the projects or the portions of projects that address existing deficiencies in non-city growth are also removed. So, then the remaining eligible program cost is divided by Mount Lake Terrace's expected growth in peak hour trips for the next 10 years. So, that yields a cost per trip that can be allocated to impact fees, and that's what's used as the basis to develop a fee schedule, which associates a trip rate for particular types of land uses citywide. So, the study that we've submitted shows how the maximum fee is calculated. The city could also choose to charge less than that amount. So, go to the next slide. It shows a simplified version of how each project's cost eligibility is determined. So, we start with the project's documented cost. That cost can also be discounted if there are other potential or anticipated funding sources that may pay for part of the project. And then we evaluate each project to understand if it is responding to an existing deficiency, and if so, then we have some quantitative methods to remove the cost of addressing that existing deficiency since that portion is not eligible. We then use the city's travel model or other regional data to understand who's likely to use a TIF project. So, basically looking at where they're coming from, is it someone from inside or outside the city, to understand the percentage of trips that are related to the land uses within the city. And then based on those steps, we can calculate the percentage of each project that is eligible. that is eligible for impact fees. So our next slide just puts some numbers to that for an example. So starting with a project that's $1.4 million. This is for the Van Rye Boulevard buffered bike lanes. We assume that this project is addressing an existing need for bike facilities and that that existing deficiency is 40%. So then 60% of the project cost is serving a future need, future growth. And then we consider where trips are coming from and to. Since that's a bike project, we assume that 75% of users are coming from within the city. So following that math out, we get from the original cost of $1.4 million down to an impact fee eligible cost of $420,000.
Okay. I'll talk real quickly about how we collect those fees, the traffic impact fees. Initially, when a project is working through the permitting process, when the building permit is ready for issuance, we would then, at that time, calculate the traffic impact fee. And the way we calculate that is we look at the number of PM peak trips that project generates. We credit them, the ones that are associated with whatever that site is initially, to get a total of net new PM trips. And then we would multiply that by the impact fee rate. So and the way that those trips are calculated is a standard... It's based on the ITE trip generation method. So it's using standard trip generation rates for types of different types of development. So once that rate, that fee is established, we collect that. That needs to be collected before the building permit is actually issued. So once they've collected that, then they'd get their building permit. Now, there are a couple of instances where an applicant can request deferment. That's associated with a single-family attached or detached development, in which case they can request a deferment where the payment of that impact fee can be deferred until either the request for first inspection, or final inspection of the project, or within eight months of the permit being issued, whichever comes first. If an applicant has issues with the amount of the impact fee, they can pay and protest so that they can get their building permit. And then after that, they would appeal the building, the impact fee, and then through the appeal process, that issue would be resolved. So there again, it's determined kind of before, right as the building permit is ready for issuance, and then once that's paid, or it's paid before it's actually collected. And then there is an opportunity for developers to get credit for any work that they're doing as far as either dedication of land that they're dedicating or work they're doing that's associated with any of the projects that are listed in the... that are used to calculate that impact fee rate. So they can get credit for some of their impact fee. About the various projects, these I'm gonna go through pretty quickly 'cause you're pretty familiar with these. These are in the six-year TIP, most of them. There's a few new ones. And so you, I believe you're probably familiar with them. The first one is the 220th Street and 58th. That's looking at installing either traffic circle or roundabout to kind of address capacity issues, but it would also help with safety issues. The second is 236th and 58th. That's upgrading the existing rectangular rapid-flashing beacon that's there currently to a full signal to facilitate traffic movements there. The third one is a new one. It's Van Rye Boulevard Bike Lanes. It's extending kind of the existing bike lanes that are currently on Van Rye that go down to the Gateway Plaza development. It's extending those all the way to the southern city limits at 244th. The next project is bike lanes on 56th, and this is specifically between 220th and 230th. So you know, we're anticipating with the Main Street project, we have bike lanes between 230th and 236th. So this is kind of extending it upwards to 220th, and eventually that could cut tie into the bike lanes on 52nd. The next project is 228th Street Greenway. This is establishing bike facilities, or better, bike facility on 228th, between 56th, where we are looking to get bike lanes, and to the community center, which would also provide access through the park. The next project is the Main Street Violization Project Phase Two. And this is where we're looking to get wider sidewalks, restripe to fewer lanes, and implement bike lanes on both sides of the street. The next project, Project Seven, is once again on 56th. This is striped bike lanes, but this is going to the southern end. So it's starting at 236th and going to the south end. The idea is to try and build a bike corridor along that 56th corridor. The next project is 52nd Avenue West. This would construct bike lanes from where they stop currently on 52nd at 220th. This would extend them south to 222nd. And there again, this would provide bikes' access to the backside of the park. And so it would really be a connection with the 228th Greenway. So we're looking at trying to create a connected bike facility through the city. The next project is looking at bike facilities on 221st and 222nd, the one-way couplet. And this is really to provide a bike connection between 48th and then those new bike facilities we're trying to reach on 52nd. And then Project 10 is 52nd Avenue West Sidewalk. This project has been on our six-year TIP for a few years, and it's just extending sidewalk on the east side of 52nd, a little bit farther south than where it currently extends. So from 220th to 222nd, and that's to provide better access to the elementary school. And then the last two projects, 48th Avenue Bike Lanes. This is... This would construct... Currently on 48th, we have kind of the... An existing lower-cost alternative sidewalk. There's some C-curb out there that creates a planted area and then a pedestrian space behind it. This would actually pull that, remove that, and then construct a more formal sidewalk that's consistent with our current city designs. And then install bike lanes on either side, connecting down to the southern portion of the city limits. And then the last project is the 44th Avenue West Road Diet. This would continue the three-lane configuration from where it stops currently at 226th Place all the way to the northern city limits at 212th. So it would be improving some, doing some sidewalk improving improvements, resurfacing, reducing it to a three-lane configuration with bike lanes on all three sides. So we're really looking at kind of more multimodal projects for the transportation impact fee.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a quick question, John. Is the TIF ID any indication of priority, or are they...
It's not.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Well, hopefully you guys can see there's been a lot of thought put into this, a lot of thought about projects that are important, funding these projects. As Ariel walked through, you know, we've really kind of followed state guidance in how to calculate these fees. I think, you know, our interest is something that helps you to advance your capital program, meet those needs, build that multimodal transportation system, and at the same time, put together a program that's very defensible, very in line with state law. What you can see on this screen is just that there are a lot of communities in the state that have transportation impact fee programs. There's more than 90 cities and counties in Washington that currently charge TIFs, so it's a very common source. When we think about Mount Lake Terrace's transportation impact fee program, it is important to think about, as we're thinking about the rate that you can charge and, you know, what we can come up with in our technical calculations, also to think about, well, what's in line with kind of your neighbors, peer cities? So that's something that we've taken a look at. The image on the screen here actually is taken from the MSRC. That's, you know, a really common source, a great source that practitioners look to for kind of best practices all over the state. And, you know, really what it's providing a summary is that there's just... There's a ton of cities that charge impact fee programs. I will say, however, that as TIF programs have evolved over time and become more multimodal, and some are vehicle-trip-based and some are person-trip-based, I will say that this source has become a little bit less useful. The... All the cities that you can see on the screen here, it's a little bit of apples and oranges. Some of these guys are based on person trips, some of these are based on vehicle trips. So it's hard to look at this and know exactly where Mount Lake Terrace sits relative to kind of the rest of the state. But again, the primary takeaway here on this screen is just that TIF programs are common. I would say it's... It is correct to say that your current program, where your fee lies today, you're on the lower end of the spectrum compared to kind of the remainder of the state. Not to say you're the absolute lowest, but you're kind of in that lower kind of third. And that there's probably some room for some increase when we look at kind of your neighbors. If we can go to the next slide. What we've done here is really tried to look at a single lane use. That's the best way to kind of have more of an apples-to-apples comparison. Because then it doesn't matter whether they have vehicle trips or they have person-trip-based programs. We're looking more at how much would a single... How much would it cost for a single-family home? And that gives us a good basis for kind of understanding how much would be charged under, again, the maximum rate for Mount Lake Terrace versus, you know, what some of your neighbors are charging. So just in kind of looking at, you know, some of your peers in this kind of proximate area. Bothell, you know, certainly has the highest fees out of this group. They charge about $12,000 per single-family home. They're certainly on the high end. For the state, they're not the highest by any means. But, you know, kind of for the local area, they're on the high end. Mount Lake Terrace's fee, based on kind of the program that we've kind of put together here, would fall kind of between Shoreline and Edmonds. And I would note, just in looking at what we've got on the screen here, some of these jurisdictions are actually actively looking at updating their rates right now. Bothell is actually looking at, and I'm not sure that they're gonna raise it, but they are updating to reflect a new project list and new growth assumptions following update of their comp plan. I am under the understanding Edmonds is probably gonna be taking a look at their program, as will Everett. So just know that this is fairly dynamic. So with that, I think I'll pass it over, think back to the city, and talk about construction cost increases. And I will say, just, I wanna put one plug in here. You guys have had a construction cost increase factor in place since you adopted the program in 2016. It's really helped you over time. You've been able to have your rate float over time, so that's a really positive attribute. We'd strongly recommend that you kind of maintain that sort of item within your ordinance.
So what I'm showing here is an excerpt from the Mortenson Construction Cost Index. And you can see how that's increased since 2009. Looking at the CPI for the Seattle area last year, it was 3%. But the Construction Cost Index reflects some of the tariffs and some of the other construction issues, and it turned out to be 5.9. So this is gonna help us maintain our constructibility of the projects when it gets to be that time. I'm going to bring up the changes in the ordinance that we're proposing. And one of the changes that we're proposing to make is all of us between parks and transportation using the same index. Right now, our park, our ordinance says the Parks Department uses the Seattle CPI. But we're doing construction projects in the park, too, so it makes more sense that we use the same index. So our community notification, this just describes the open house that we had on the 20th, where we were soliciting for additional project ideas. We had online submissions also. You know, we explained a lot of the projects to the people who attended the open house, and the open house materials were available online. We didn't really get any new ideas, so I'm gonna say that we did a very comprehensive look at the projects and came up with a list people agreed with, so. So our staff recommendations are to adopt the maximum fee that the rate study has proposed. The increase of the traffic impact fee would go up to $6,051. It's about an 18%, 19% increase over where we are right now. But part of the justification for this is the higher cost of construction. And there's a few projects that have been taken off the old list and a lot of the multimodal projects that have been made, added to that, which I think is a good indication of why we are recommending this. And again, if you look at the comparisons from some of the other jurisdictions, you know, we're not at the high end of stuff. We're kind of more in the middle, so. I can stop here for questions, or I can go into some of the proposed changes for the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. Hopefully a quick question. I guess I'm just curious, looking at the slide for the TIF rates per single-family dwelling unit, it indicates that Linwood and Shoreline both have different rates depending on where in the city it is. Can you speak to just kind of why it looks like we're being proposed to just have a singular rate for the city? I guess, can you just speak to kind of that recommendation?
I'd be happy to talk to that. I don't know that I can go into a lot of specifics around Linwood, but I actually did help author Shoreline's program. So for Shoreline, they, you know, it's a big city, a lot larger than Mount Lake Terrace. And we did wanna recognize that when you were close to light rail, when you were in some of their denser kind of neighborhoods, recognizing that travel just tends to be more efficient. People are using their cars less, shorter trips. So that was an important distinction for them. Again, it was because the city is fairly large. For example, the Richmond Beach neighborhood has a very different travel profile than some of their neighborhoods that are really close to their light rail systems. So for a city that's two-by-two here, I don't know that I would recommend multiple kind of rates. That quite honestly, maybe potentially makes the program more complex. But that's why Shoreline has multiple rates.
Thank you. No, that makes a lot of sense. I appreciate the explanation.
All right. Continue. Oh, are you... Did you have a... Okay.
Didn't work. I was. Well, I can do it by... I can just say. So there weren't a lot of edits to the ordinance. And so I'm gonna zoom through. I was able to post today a redlined version of it so you can see exactly where the edits were. One of the first edits, we added a definition for low-income household. You'll see in some of the newer legislation that they refer to a low-income household. So we added that to our list of definitions. We revised our project list to discuss the... For the transportation impact fees that we're using our current rate study that we're proposing tonight. And we're still keeping in there that the Parks Department uses their six-year CIP. We updated the definition for road facilities to include public streets, roads, and bicycle and pedestrian facilities that were designed with multimodal commuting as an intended use that are addressed in a capital facilities plan element of a comprehensive plan adopted under GMA. Previously, I think it just said public facilities related... Previously, I think it just said public facilities related to land transportation. So we enhanced that. And then we made some edits under the impact fee, or updates to the impact fee rates, which is what I alluded to earlier, that we wanted to make sure that the Parks projects were using the same index as the transportation were. So we made edits to codify that. And those are the edits to the ordinance. So if there's any questions, we would be happy to answer.
Are there any questions? If not, then we'll just go directly to Mayor Pretam Wall. Oh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, just to clarify, recommended action is we will look to adopt this at our next meeting?
Yes. Next week, we're scheduled to come back with a public hearing. And so we will do a shortened presentation, but we'll have public comment and stuff. And so we can answer questions there also.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. So we'll have this in front of us with the specific action to take next week. I guess I would be remiss if I didn't point out, we have competing needs and challenges here in the city. And funding our infrastructure, transportation infrastructure in this case particularly, is certainly one of them. And that's what the Traffic Transportation Impact Fees looks to help us address. And that's important. Another competing need is housing affordability. And we want affordable housing. And we really should have Housing Hope and HSCO come give us a presentation sometime to talk about housing and the costs of housing, and what even nonprofit developers of affordable housing run up against. And they've shared with us at one of our last meetings with the collaboration, regional collaboration meeting, how government costs, fees, and regulations drive up the cost of housing construction by, was it 40%? 30%? A lot. And impact fees is part of that picture. And another thing that's important to note is that depending on how long the developer, the builder, has to carry those costs, it could add two to four times to the impact fee. So in other words, that's $8,000 could end up costing the developer, builder, in building that project $16,000 to $24,000. That's not to say, to be clear, that I'm opposing this, because, again, we have competing needs, both of which are priorities for the city. I'm just pointing it out to recognize the impact of the decisions that we make in one area can have an effect on other priorities. And one of those other priorities that this has an impact on is housing affordability. So just be aware of how the decisions we're making and how they impact other aspects of our priorities. But this is, getting back to this, particularly, this is a priority that, to accommodate that growth that we know is coming, we've got to provide the transportation infrastructure and put that in place. We need to be able to fund it. That's what this is about.
If I could add, we did build into our calculation the 50% reduction for ADUs. So there is some, or that shows up in the rate tables in how we will apply this after the first of the year.
Councilmember Salmor?
Thank you, Councilman Wall, for your comments. That's why I didn't want to interrupt, because I thought I knew where you were going with it. But my comment is, we're going to be looking at how to get money, more money into our city, because we know we have a shortfall coming. So my question to you, both of you, and I love both of your names, too, I thought that was, is you mentioned about looking and how you did the cost analysis. So I have to ask, being good stewards of money in the city, what we're supposed to do, could we go higher? Because we're going to be looking at all the different ways to bring in money to the city, and I'm just wondering what that could do for us.
So we kind of follow that process. Thank you. Starting with the project list that John shared, and kind of take those steps, which are really laid out in the state law. And that is, that maximum number that we come up with is the max that we have. So that's, in terms of your choice, you could be there, or it could be lower. But based on the rate study, that's the maximum fee that we came up with. Is this the $6,051?
Councilmember Salmor, you have to turn on your microphone.
All right, there was another one.
Per person trip. So that's the number showing per person trip. But then, depending on the actual land use, it works out differently. So then, that next slide is showing what the cost would be for a single-family dwelling unit, which is about $8,000.
Under our maximum, I'm sorry, can you just repeat that? The $8,000 is at the maximum? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If I may, just to respond quickly more to you. Very good question. I think at this point, we worked really dutifully with the city staff to really understand what are all of those projects that would be beneficial to add to this program. And then we really took a careful look at eligibility, and we ran all kinds of scenarios. So I think we did test lots of ways of program formulation, I think, to get the number as high as we could. So I think that's, that's kind of, to your question, I think we've done that pretty much as high as we can. I mean, short of finding more capital projects you want to pull into the program. But again, there's a lot of different requirements. Project needs to be in your comprehensive plan, needs to provide capacity. So I think at this point, these are probably the right list of projects.
It's getting late. What could be moved more into our capital program? Sorry.
So we're, other jurisdictions that I've been in, when we do our transportation network capacity level of service analysis, there's always a number of spots that have a deficiency in their level of service. Here in Mount Lake Terrace, we're actually looking pretty good traffic-wise. You know, we've made some improvements to 220th. That's probably our heaviest traffic corridor. 56 right now, until we get more growth out there, the travel times work pretty well there. So we don't have a nexus, really, for a big transportation project that's going to cost a lot, that would drive up our per-person cost. But we do need more bike facilities, pedestrian facilities, so that as we move people out of their cars, or provide them options to move out of their cars, that's where we had to focus. The thing about a lot of the bike projects is they don't always cost a lot of money. So what we tried to do is understand what all the costs were. But because we can only use the growth-related portion of those projects, by the time we take the growth-related only and divide it by the number of person trips, the max that we end up being able to charge is at $6,051. Again, if we add some more projects to the list to make our costs go up, we have to show that there's a need for growth in that area. And so that's what's limiting how much more we can charge at this time.
Mayor Pretam Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for following up. Appreciate the discussion on the priorities and how they were set, or the list, I guess I should say, and not prioritized. I am curious how that came about. Our former mayor's love for bikes comes to mind. But what I hear from the community is sidewalks is their highest priority. And so I'm interested in, not necessarily opposed to bike lanes, mind you, just that sidewalks would be a higher priority. So I'm just curious how bike lanes seem to be a running, other than the cost, it sounds like, a running theme. As a poet said, there are a few sidewalk projects, and there are some traffic calming and improvements, et cetera. But just curious.
Well, I think part of that is because we're looking at how we can improve capacity on our streets, and we're looking at capacity as getting more bikes on the street, right? And so we don't have those types of bike, those facilities to help us with that capacity. For sidewalks, we actually have, on a lot of our materials, we have a fairly good sidewalk network. And so I think we're trying to build out that bike, as we look at different modes for our transportation, looking at, building out, where can we, what can we do to encourage that increase? And so I don't, I think, I don't know if anyone else has a better way to explain that, but that makes sense?
I mean, we were looking at the overall map of the city for the location of sidewalks, and we actually have a pretty good network, like John's saying. If there were a few spots that were missing links, that would be something that we could consider. But again, we need to make sure that we're, it's something that's tied to a growth project. And sometimes, if there was already a sidewalk on one side, is that the best use of our money for, you know, our limited dollars in that case?
Councilmember Whitaker?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go to Slide 15 or 16? I just want to see the map, and really just want to talk about eligible projects. And I'll pause to say, we did not make 10:30, so it might take me five minutes on my questions. Should we extend the time now?
Do we want to? Okay. Mayor Pretam Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All the polls? We are. It's up till 11.
Perfect. So on that note, really, I'm looking at the map. And if you were to zoom in, I never noticed before, but I noticed the interurban trail isn't listed on here. And when I think about capacity, I'm embarrassed to say, it's probably been three or four years since I did the bike ride with a couple of different activists in the city. But they pointed out how, although we have a small portion of the interurban, if we took care of it better, you would increase the traffic. And it literally is connecting growth, end of the day. I mean, mine, that should be Mount Lake Terrace. It's part of our chain. So this is my way of saying, I don't know if that can be on here somewhere. I don't remember what was wrong. Let me back up. I mean, there's people who ride it all the time, I'm sure, could tell you down to the minuscule level of what's missing. But just didn't want to miss that if we're going to have this heavy bike focus that we do recognize, well, we're actually not very good stewards, per the bicyclists, of a pretty major resource that is regional. So just kind of putting that out there, I don't need a response today about adding it to the list, just adding it to your consciousness of things to look into. Because, again, there's definitely folks who can speak to that. If we had a former council member who would have jumped in hours ago about this, for example. So just putting that out there, something to think about.
If I could add to that, I think the reason we didn't put the interurban trail on there is it's existing. And if there's elements that need to be improved, it would be, it could be considered a deficiency, not necessarily a growth project. And deficiencies aren't eligible for this project. So that's why we didn't include it on this list. Now, if there's places where we can make improvements, they would probably come from a different program.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you, everybody, and I'll see you next week.
Thank you. Okay, so next, on our agenda. Thank you very much, everyone. Is a review of the Interlocal Agreement Amendment III with Edmonds School District, with our Recreation and Parks Director, Jeff Betts.
Okay, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pretam, councilmembers. I'm Jeff Betts, Recreation Parks Director for the city. And I've been reminded not to have 52 slides. So we will make this quick. Edmonds School District ILA, this is a proposed change from staff to the Interlocal Agreement that governs the relationship between the city and the school district with recreation and parks. So we've had many iterations of Interlocal Agreements over the many decades that we have this relationship. But the newest version that we work off now was approved by council in 2018, and has had a few subsequent amendments over the past few years. So the Interlocal Agreement being amended now specifically affects Terrace Park School, elementary's athletic fields, Mount Lake Terrace High School Theater, kids' crew sites, as well as pavilions, pool, and racquetball courts. So this third amendment may look familiar, because you looked at one very similar to it that was called Amendment III last December, and you approved it. Thank you for doing that. But the school district did not approve that amendment. So we've been working since then to get to a place where we are tonight. So the impetus for this amendment rests with the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office. So we had an agreement to add lights to Evergreen Playfield Number Five. And there was no requirement to add this language at that time. But then, about two years later, when we went to get our money, they said, hey, you don't have this language, we need to add that. So we worked with the school district to add language that would allow the city to plan, design, engineer, permit, construct, and maintain improvements on their property. And so it is a different situation for the state to give money to somebody that doesn't own the property, right? So we're building improvements with an agreement, so to speak. So as mentioned, we did present this amendment to council, and council approved in December. The school district did not. And so we've been working with them ever since to allow us to continue to plan and improve those athletic fields. The idea behind that is that there is not a lot of open property in the city to improve athletic fields, to allow for future growth, and really just, they own a lot of property, and so that's why we do have Interlocal Agreements. So the district, one of the issues they had with it is they wanted to retain the ability to, in the future, potentially cancel that Interlocal. And the language that the state wanted them to have would be where they could not cancel it, essentially. So they did not want to tie future school boards' hands, is essentially what they told us. But that E5 project was completed last summer, and we can't get reimbursed from the state until that has been updated. But additionally, we have another project on the horizon that we got a grant for, Evergreen Playfield Number Four, to light that field. As mentioned, that was just approved by the state for funding. The agreement has not came to council yet, so that will be in the next few months. But we'll have three-plus years to finish that project. So really, this is just for half of what we originally came for in December. And as outlined in the staff report, if there was some kind of interruption in that Interlocal Agreement, and say the school district wanted to build a new school on that field, and then all of our improvements were gone, we would have to replace that with the state. They would, kind of like what we had to do with the harms property. If you remember, years ago, we had to purchase property to, I guess, to replace that value that was interrupted. So that would be something that we would work on if that did happen. We would have to find some other recreation amenities, such as lighting a different field, so to speak. So this is where we're at with the amendment. I'd be happy I'd be happy to take any questions. It is scheduled for October 2nd consent calendar, if council's wishes. So, but staff recommendation is for the council to authorize next October 2nd only consent. The city manager to sign that amendment number three to the interlocal agreement for the exchange of recreation facilities and services that addresses RCO's concerns.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for you. If, if I heard you right, is it that if the school decides to not have the interlocal agreement and they reuse those fields, would we have to pay the state back for
Yes.
some items we add?
Yes. Or we'd have to find, either you'd pay or you'd have to just develop that same, you'd have to replace the value of that recreation amenity within the park system. So if they paid for those lights, we would, you know, light a different field, so to speak.
I see.
Right. Or if they built, like they did at Madrona, if they built a new school up on those fields and they would develop the lower areas of all fields, like they've done at a couple different, just switch the services, they included lights on that field that would replace that value.
So would it be a matter of we could take the pole down and move it?
Yeah, potentially, you could reuse those, those amenities.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jeff. Thank you for working on this for so long. I guess, do we see this as anything with significant risk in terms of that being a possibility of the school district going a different route in the future?
They did not indicate as such. They just didn't want to tie the hands of future boards, is essentially what they've told me. But we did try many different languages that we thought would, could alleviate their concerns that they didn't want to agree to.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Woodard?
I think that was me. Thank you, Mayor. That was funny. Like, what? Yeah, I also want to applaud you for sticking with this. My couple minutes on the task was very annoying, and so I can only imagine how it's been to be there the entire time. That said, is there a time limit from the state's perspective, or is it just like, in perpetuity, if you ever change that field, we want you to redo something? Or is it like, within 10 years, you've met our, whatever the parameter is, and you can look away? I only bring that up to say, the odds of the school selling anything are really low. So I just kind of want to pitch that. It doesn't mean you want to cut your hands off because it's really low, but I'm just trying to leave everything, and that's just my reminder how broke the school system is. And I mean that fiscally, not the people working there, I just mean fiscally. So they're trying to make sure they don't cut off their capacity. So I do want to recognize, there's where the rub is. But again, it comes back to the state who's kind of overseeing all the children. Do they go at some point, you've met your match and we can move on?
Yeah, there's a, they've set windows for each type of improvement. And so this is a youth athletic facilities grant, and it's a 20-year commitment to have those resources in place for 20 years.
Anyone else? I don't have this one open, so we are not voting on it today. All right. So then, do we move on to the next one? Okay, so the next is the presentation on park impact fees. Again, with Jeff Betts.
Yes. And this presentation's going to be quite a bit different than what you just saw from transportation. So, and the reasons are is because transportation, for theirs, they did a complete reboot, basically. They did a new rate study. So this, and I'll go into it in a little bit more detail, but this is not a reboot for a rate study, although we do need to do that. But this, this is more of just to be, actually just to be in line with state law. So there was a new state law that passed and that we're not in compliance with, that we need to become in compliance with, so. So today's purpose is just to review the park impact fee updates I've brought to you, just to comply with state law. And you've probably already got a really good idea of this from the last presentation, but, you know, just a reminder that impact fees are a one-time charge that local governments do impose on new development to fund new or expanded public facilities to serve new growth only. So these fees, as mentioned, can fund public streets, roads, parks, schools, fire protection. Here in Mount Lake Terrace, we just have street construction and park development, transportation and park development impact fees. But you can do for all those other things as well in Washington State. So they cannot be used to fix existing deficiencies, and they must be that proportionate share of the cost. So you have to judge each type of project and how much new growth is served by that particular type of project. So if you don't have, for instance, throw something out, if you don't have a skate park, you could reason that that is a new project that should be funded more by impact fees if there is an expectation that a lot of people would want that activity, so to speak. So this authorization comes from GMA to charge impact fees. And then, next slide. So tonight, we'll talk about how this relates to council goals, the legislative history, and then that SB 5258 that the legislature passed, the updated fee structure, and then next steps. And each photo I'm showing just projects that have been funded or are being funded with impact fees partially. So council goals, growing our vibrant community, responsible governance to ensure desired levels of service, and those sub-bullet points, all definitely fit with what we are doing here by collecting impact fees. The legislative history of this project dates back to 2007, when the first impact fee ordinance was adopted by council. And for parks, that was just for a town center park, it was all one purpose at that time. We wanted a town center park, so we collected fees for a number of years just for that purpose. Well, we ended up expending those, rightfully so, on the one right behind us, the town center, Jerry Smith Town Center Park. So great use of those funds. And then we did several different updates to that impact fee ordinance in 2008, 2011, different variations, but there wasn't a total reboot until 2016. And that's the last time we've actually done that methodology, and the whole impact fee rate study was completely redone then. And we expanded its reach from, to citywide, I should say, from just town center to citywide collection. And then there wasn't two service areas, there would just be one. We did a rate study, took into account levels of service of facilities and acreage combination methodology. It's very complicated, the methodologies are. So, and the reason why we're here today, we mentioned, is that SB 5258. So the purpose behind this from the state, and I'm reading the RCW how I'm writing this, right? So that really is just, the direction was, was, this was passed because we wanted, the state wanted to replace fees that were based on single or multifamily and change this to more of a per bedroom or per square footage stance. And really, the reason is that, is that you could potentially charge less to smaller developments. It wouldn't impact smaller developments, potentially could encourage those smaller developments to move forward. So this is a comparison of that fee structure. So the top chart is our current rates, and those rates are administratively changed each year by, before, by different methodology than we just saw. So there was, we used the CPI before for parks, and now that's being changed to the construction index, as mentioned in that ordinance. But the current rates are listed here, single, multi-commercial, and then there was a law the year before that also made us change ADUs to a 50% of single-family rate. Now, the new draft proposed schedule, and this is attached also in a separate document that outlines how we got there, but it includes, it's really hard to compare on this chart, I understand that, but I'm going to show you some comparisons. It shows you different rates for whatever development you want. If you have 50 apartments with three bedrooms, your rate would be based on 4731. Or if you have, you know, just studios, it would be 1902 per studio. So that is how that ended up working out. And so those rates are based on, like I mentioned, we didn't do new rate study. So we didn't take all new inputs and data. We didn't go out and look at this year's comprehensive plan that just passed all new information and targets. We didn't do any of that, because if we did that, we would need to do an all-new rate study, which costs tens of thousands of dollars potentially, and six months to a year to actually accomplish. So the idea behind tonight and, and this process was, let's be compliant with state law. Let's just make sure that we're doing what we need to do and be compliant. So we used old numbers, so comprehensive plan numbers from the original rate study. We didn't change that rate study, but we updated the dollar amounts to 2025. So that way, we're kind of in the ballpark to where we are now. And then that's where these numbers came from. They're also adjusted for like CIP, how much money we have, so that way, there's proportionate share, and so the city's not paying it all, but the developers aren't paying it all. It's a, part of that methodology is, it's in a document that's attached as well. So the effect of that, so this is an example. I took the development's name off of this and just called it large development. So for this per-bedroom example of a large development, it has 174 studio units, 165 one-bedroom, 87 two-bedroom units, and about 5,216 of commercial space, square footage. So this is the current, in the middle is currently how we would charge that development. And then the proposed does lessen the load a little bit for impact fees on them, drops at about $54,000. And that's really because of this change in methodology is charging less for the smaller units, essentially. So the next one is just an example of a small development, and these are all real numbers of actual developments that are in, in process right now, as mentioned. So this one has six two-bedroom units. And so based on that, it is a small decline, about $948 less with the new proposed fee, but it is less. And then an example of the ADU. So ADU's the same, it's still 50%, but it ends up being that the smaller one-bedroom is cheaper than the previous one, single-family was. So this is basically comparing half of a single-family of the current rate and half of that one-bedroom rate in the proposed. So for an ADU, it's $550 cheaper, which is quite a bit out of $2,000. So, sorry to cruise through this quickly, but next steps would be to, there isn't any action tied to tonight's presentation. It would be that we would be in compliance with state law by adopting these fees administratively, and that we would publish them so people would know as soon as possible, potentially beginning of the month or Monday, I think we talked about at one time. So it would be a short timeframe. Can't imagine a lot of objections to people paying less. But the next step beyond that would be the 27, 2027 Recreation Park Open Space Plan. We have dollars budgeted, $120,000 for consultant. So part of that master planning of the park system, we would wrap in an impact fee study and update this and figure out if our methodologies are consistent with what people are doing now and where our rate sits, just so, pretty much what you just saw from transportation. And so our intent would be to kick that off in 2026, that whole process. It's probably a 12 to 16, 18-month process, pretty long planning. And then lots of public meetings, lots, lots of different methods. And then we do that, really, that Recreation Park Open Space Master Plan, so we can be compliant with GMA, but RCO requires that for us to be eligible for future park grants. That's it. Any questions?
Are there any questions? I think this is probably a little bit...
Pardon?
It looks to be fairer, so I can't imagine anyone complaining about this. So are there any questions before we? All right. And this is also going to be on consent? No, this is not...
It's just a presentation, there's no action.
Oh, administrative change. Okay. Thank you. I'm just reading this wrong here. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Okay, so next is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Petten, members of council, a few things to mention. First, we did have a little bit of a hiccup with our community ambassadors program signup on the website. For some reason, it was requiring a account signup in order to log in, even though every place we looked said, don't force a signup. So we submitted a ticket with Civic Plus, Jennifer worked on that quite a bit. We've got it fixed, but we did have a little bit of a hiccup there. So we're making sure, trying to get the word out to folks that it's much easier to take care of, you know, signing up to be a community ambassador now. Next, you may have noticed, a lot of our street crews around the city, they're filling potholes in advance of the winter months and restriping as well, so that all the lines on the road are bright when it gets dark and rainy. And the pavement condition index study is going on right now as well. So a lot of things going on out there on the road. Finally, yesterday, we started our emergency evacuation practice. So a fire drill will be coming up here pretty soon. Everybody knows where they're going to go, and when they're under a lot of stress, they're going to know exactly what to do, we hope. But we're going to practice that here coming up soon. That's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city manager. Just a quick one, with the challenge with the community ambassador application process, are we, do we have the ability to extend the deadline on that? Is that the plan? Do we have a new deadline? I know the third, I think, was the original deadline.
We're talking with, it was a problem for a couple of days, but we're talking with communications on when we're going to, when we're going to do that.
Okay, but we'll make an announcement to folks. Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to the review of the October 2nd agenda. And then, after that, is council comments. Does anyone have any council comments?
Oh, just on the agenda.
Oh, go ahead.
We just need to update the consent calendar, and I'm sure Jennifer already knows.
Anyone else? On the agenda?
Good on the agenda, right? Good on the agenda, everybody.
Well, that's an addition, that word. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
We'll update based on your actions this evening.
Okay. All right. Next is council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Be very quick, but just while it's top of mind, I have lots of concern from neighbors about changes in waste management pickup, Jeff. I don't know if those have made their way to you guys yet, but if we could get folks an update on that and get council an update, I think that would be appreciated.
We've already reached out to waste management, and hopefully we'll have an answer by tomorrow.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, I don't see anyone else, so we're going to just adjourn. Thank you. Good night.